I'd like to call to order the Highland Park Board of Education Hybrid Workshop Voting Meeting on today, Monday, February 26th. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given an opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. May I have a roll call? Dr. Beatty? Ms. Cassaldon? Here. Dr. Coleman? Dr. Pixley? Here. Ms. Bruce? Here. Dr. Schoolman? Here. Ms. Daniel? Here. Ms. Gardeman? Here. Ms. Voorhees? Here. We will now recess to executive session. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA 10:4-1213, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to HIB and student discipline. These exceptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussions will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we recess to executive session. Second. All in favor? Aye. I move that we reconvene to regular session. Next second. You let us stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We had several communications last month regarding June 19th, some emails regarding the school safety, after-school wages, HIB reporting, pre-canteen branching, start times, how department heads are organized, some community concerns, start time surveys, and the Irving School sign. Number eight is the approval of minutes. I move to approve hybrid regular public meeting and executive session minutes from January 22nd, 2024. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassaldon? Yes. Dr. Coleman? Yes. Dr. Pixley? Yes. Ms. Bruce? Yes. Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel? Yes. Ms. Gardeman? Yes. Ms. Voorhees? Yes. We're going to move on to our student representative reports.
Okay. Hi, guys. So, we're gonna start off with our name like usual. It's been a busy month with exciting activities and opportunities for the kids. Students enjoyed Global Play Day, in part the day of Unstructured Play, which sounds like so much fun. They also had Red Max Kindness Week, celebrated with Spirit Week and activities to promote some recinty and friendship. Students enjoyed Dance Fit Booster Thong, sponsored by Irving's PTO, and raised just over $7,000. Would like to thank everyone for participating. They also just celebrated their 100th day of school with county-themed activities all day long. They also collected 147 cans of dog food and cat food and a bunch of treats brought in for their school service activity, and that will all be donated to Sammy's Hope. Irving also wants to share their appreciation for all the families that came out for the parent evenings with play therapist Christian Belize. On the deadline front, preschool registration will be open through March 22nd, which is the last date they will accept any registrations. Again, it's March 22nd, the last day for preschool registration. And kindergarten's registration will begin on March 28th. So, can you... We don't know that yet. All additional information can be found on Irving's website.
Over at Carrow, on January 31st, they hosted a Carrow STEM Night, which included math, science, and activities. And on February 7th, Carrow also celebrated School Play Day. And then on February 9th, they participated as well in the Dance Fit Booster Thong, raising almost $9,000. And on February 29th, Peets and Dowies and Brothers will host a Black History Month Read-In, an activity named O-Chain, Song, Dance, and Stepping. Students are very excited.
Okay, back over to the middle school. Students in action will be running Penny Wars fundraiser to help support the local animal shelter. The grades who earn the most money will earn extended recess and a high school party. Here's how it works, if you don't know. You put pennies or dollar bills in your grades bucket to count as positive points and sabotage other grades by placing silver coins, nickels, dimes, or quarters in their boxes to count as negative points. Middle school will be collecting the pennies during lunch until the first of March. Parents, check for loose change to help support grade calls. Eighth graders were voted in for this year's eighth grade's purlug and will be featured in the yearbook with their photos, which is super cute. The Board of Education, us, invited middle school students to participate in a strategic plan initiative to create a shared vision for the future of Highland Park's school district. This was an awesome opportunity for the students to have a voice in the direction they want the district to go.
Some news to our sixth grade families. The sixth graders are going to adventure Claring. Commission slips are due Friday, March 1st, and can be accessed at the middle school's main office. For our sporty friends, consider attending the track and chess meeting on February 27th with Coach Talcus and Coach Farmer after school at 3:00 PM in the middle school gym. At Middle School, I have been celebrating Black History Month every day by reading a biography of a famous black person and posting their picture in the dressing room. They also had a Black History Month assembly on February 23rd, where the school choir students performed songs and others sang poetry. They also had a dance mobile from Anthony Harris performing his dance routine.
Okay, to the high school now. We have a lot of news, both past and future. The Highland Park High School Drama Club was able to get great experience working with Broadway actor Thane Jasperson, that's known for his role in Hamilton. On February 5th, will help the cast of Footloose to choreograph their final musical number. Students were able to talk with Mr. Jasperson and get feedback with him as well. He's visited the club for the past three shows, and every year, students improve their dance skills with his help. Also comes with Footloose on March 15th, 16th, and 17th. If you want, it really is. It's hurting. During the week of February 12th, the Teen Center counselors facilitated a daily lunch and learn group with respect, love, and belief. From Monday to Thursday, they led student discussions on respect for self, respect for staff, respect for family, and respect for peers. They had between eight and 12 students attend each day, and the students requested to continue media about respect for peers, since that topic becomes too insent and setting boundaries. The Teen Center is currently working to create a more permanent group as a result. On February 20th, the high school orchestra had an educational and musically enriching field trip. The orchestra visited the Van Pelt Library and Music Archives on the University of Pennsylvania campus. After dinner, the students saw Yoro Ma perform and John Williams conduct at Horizon Hall. They want to say thank you to the board for approving the trip and the Highland Park Education Foundation for providing the grant for transportation, which helped keep the trip affordable for all students. The high school orchestra's spring concert will be held on May 21st at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. So mark your calendars now.
The National Honor Society's Jeopardy event will be held tomorrow, February 27th, at 6:00 PM in high school auditorium. Come out to see the students compete against high school teachers and some surprise guests in the classic TV trivia game. Tickets are $5 at the door, and all the proceeds will go to the Highland Park Volunteer Drive Committee. The music department will be holding their annual chili cook-off competition on March 2nd from 5:00 to 6:30 PM in the high school cafeteria. Cook, eat, and vote for your favorite chili across multiple categories. These categories are vegetarian and vegan chili, meat chili, spicy chili, and escargot moulue. All proceeds will benefit the Highland Park Music Department, and you can email Mr. Preste at kpreste@natureschools.net for information on tickets, answering a chili, or any additional questions. Highland Park DECA is sending 50 students to their state competition at Harrison and Atlantic City from March 3rd to March 6th. And some other achievements from the club include getting our school DECA store at the Gold Level certified at the Gold Level for food and retail. We had 16 students reach out for our business role-playing interviewing events, and we also had 20 students that are being mentored by AT&amp;T executives in things like time management and leadership. DECA is very proud of their students' accomplishments. And finally, the Red Coral Spring Employee Drive will be held on March 22nd in high school gym from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There are questions volunteers, and those who are interested can sign up at the link that will be posted in the board bulletin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna briefly go over the structure of this evening, so we're going to have two presentations during the superintendent's report. Actually, I'm sorry, three, starting with our Irving students. Then we will go through all of our committee reports, an agenda item, recommendations. We'll have public comment, the board action items, and then our president's report, and then any new business and old business and public comments, and close. So we'll start with our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So first, I'm going to start... Hold on one second. So Ms. McNally is remote with us, so I'm going to try to put her up on the screen to share out. Ms. McNally, are your two students in person with us, or are they remote? Do you know?
One should be there, and I believe one is remote.
Okay. Okay, just give me one second, see if we can get up here. See if I can do this to... Okay. All right, so we're good, all right? Thank you, Ms. McNally. Go ahead, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Ms. McNally, our principal Irving.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you online. You know, I'm always pleased to be here for Students Spotlight. I always say it every time, it's one of my favorites, because I get to talk about all the good going on at Irving School with all, you know, so many of them.
Hi, boys, how are you? I move that we reconvene to regular session. Next second. You let us stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We had several communications last month regarding June 19th, some emails regarding the school safety, after-school wages, HIB reporting, pre-canteen branching, start times, how department heads are organized, some community concerns, start time surveys, and the Irving School sign. Number eight is the approval of minutes. I move to approve hybrid regular public meeting and executive session minutes from January 22nd, 2024. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassaldon? Yes. Dr. Coleman? Yes. Dr. Pixley? Yes. Ms. Bruce? Yes. Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel? Yes. Ms. Gardeman? Yes. Ms. Voorhees? Yes. We're going to move on to our student representative reports.
Okay. Hi, guys. So, we're gonna start off with our name like usual. It's been a busy month with exciting activities and opportunities for the kids. Students enjoyed Global Play Day, in part the day of Unstructured Play, which sounds like so much fun. They also had Red Max Kindness Week, celebrated with Spirit Week and activities to promote some recinty and friendship. Students enjoyed Dance Fit Booster Thong, sponsored by Irving's PTO, and raised just over $7,000. Would like to thank everyone for participating. They also just celebrated their 100th day of school with county-themed activities all day long. They also collected 147 cans of dog food and cat food and a bunch of treats brought in for their school service activity, and that will all be donated to Sammy's Hope. Irving also wants to share their appreciation for all the families that came out for the parent evenings with play therapist Christian Belize. On the deadline front, preschool registration will be open through March 22nd, which is the last date they will accept any registrations. Again, it's March 22nd, the last day for preschool registration. And kindergarten's registration will begin on March 28th. So, can you... We don't know that yet. All additional information can be found on Irving's website.
Over at Carrow, on January 31st, they hosted a Carrow STEM Night, which included math, science, and activities. And on February 7th, Carrow also celebrated School Play Day. And then on February 9th, they participated as well in the Dance Fit Booster Thong, raising almost $9,000. And on February 29th, Peets and Dowies and Brothers will host a Black History Month Read-In, an activity named O-Chain, Song, Dance, and Stepping. Students are very excited.
Okay, back over to the middle school. Students in action will be running Penny Wars fundraiser to help support the local animal shelter. The grades who earn the most money will earn extended recess and a high school party. Here's how it works, if you don't know. You put pennies or dollar bills in your grades bucket to count as positive points and sabotage other grades by placing silver coins, nickels, dimes, or quarters in their boxes to count as negative points. Middle school will be collecting the pennies during lunch until the first of March. Parents, check for loose change to help support grade calls. Eighth graders were voted in for this year's eighth grade's purlug and will be featured in the yearbook with their photos, which is super cute. The Board of Education, us, invited middle school students to participate in a strategic plan initiative to create a shared vision for the future of Highland Park's school district. This was an awesome opportunity for the students to have a voice in the direction they want the district to go.
Some news to our sixth grade families. The sixth graders are going to adventure Claring. Commission slips are due Friday, March 1st, and can be accessed at the middle school's main office. For our sporty friends, consider attending the track and chess meeting on February 27th with Coach Talcus and Coach Farmer after school at 3:00 PM in the middle school gym. At Middle School, I have been celebrating Black History Month every day by reading a biography of a famous black person and posting their picture in the dressing room. They also had a Black History Month assembly on February 23rd, where the school choir students performed songs and others sang poetry. They also had a dance mobile from Anthony Harris performing his dance routine.
Okay, to the high school now. We have a lot of news, both past and future. The Highland Park High School Drama Club was able to get great experience working with Broadway actor Thane Jasperson, that's known for his role in Hamilton. On February 5th, will help the cast of Footloose to choreograph their final musical number. Students were able to talk with Mr. Jasperson and get feedback with him as well. He's visited the club for the past three shows, and every year, students improve their dance skills with his help. Also comes with Footloose on March 15th, 16th, and 17th. If you want, it really is. It's hurting. During the week of February 12th, the Teen Center counselors facilitated a daily lunch and learn group with respect, love, and belief. From Monday to Thursday, they led student discussions on respect for self, respect for staff, respect for family, and respect for peers. They had between eight and 12 students attend each day, and the students requested to continue media about respect for peers, since that topic becomes too insent and setting boundaries. The Teen Center is currently working to create a more permanent group as a result. On February 20th, the high school orchestra had an educational and musically enriching field trip. The orchestra visited the Van Pelt Library and Music Archives on the University of Pennsylvania campus. After dinner, the students saw Yoro Ma perform and John Williams conduct at Horizon Hall. They want to say thank you to the board for approving the trip and the Highland Park Education Foundation for providing the grant for transportation, which helped keep the trip affordable for all students. The high school orchestra's spring concert will be held on May 21st at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. So mark your calendars now.
The National Honor Society's Jeopardy event will be held tomorrow, February 27th, at 6:00 PM in high school auditorium. Come out to see the students compete against high school teachers and some surprise guests in the classic TV trivia game. Tickets are $5 at the door, and all the proceeds will go to the Highland Park Volunteer Drive Committee. The music department will be holding their annual chili cook-off competition on March 2nd from 5:00 to 6:30 PM in the high school cafeteria. Cook, eat, and vote for your favorite chili across multiple categories. These categories are vegetarian and vegan chili, meat chili, spicy chili, and escargot moulue. All proceeds will benefit the Highland Park Music Department, and you can email Mr. Preste at kpreste@natureschools.net for information on tickets, answering a chili, or any additional questions. Highland Park DECA is sending 50 students to their state competition at Harrison and Atlantic City from March 3rd to March 6th. And some other achievements from the club include getting our school DECA store at the Gold Level certified at the Gold Level for food and retail. We had 16 students reach out for our business role-playing interviewing events, and we also had 20 students that are being mentored by AT&amp;T executives in things like time management and leadership. DECA is very proud of their students' accomplishments. And finally, the Red Coral Spring Employee Drive will be held on March 22nd in high school gym from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There are questions volunteers, and those who are interested can sign up at the link that will be posted in the board bulletin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna briefly go over the structure of this evening, so we're going to have two presentations during the superintendent's report. Actually, I'm sorry, three, starting with our Irving students. Then we will go through all of our committee reports, an agenda item, recommendations. We'll have public comment, the board action items, and then our president's report, and then any new business and old business and public comments, and close. So we'll start with our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So first, I'm going to start... Hold on one second. So Ms. McNally is remote with us, so I'm going to try to put her up on the screen to share out. Ms. McNally, are your two students in person with us, or are they remote? Do you know?
One should be there, and I believe one is remote.
Okay. Okay, just give me one second, see if we can get up here. Okay. All right, so we're good, all right? Thank you, Ms. McNally. Go ahead, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Ms. McNally, our principal Irving.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you online. You know, I'm always pleased to be here for Students Spotlight. I always say it every time, it's one of my favorites, because I get to talk about all the good going on at Irving School with all, you know, so many of them. And the two that we're spotlighting this evening, one is kindergartener, I'm going to start with Catalina Flores. I believe you are there in person. Seeing Dr. Susan's face, I think she's adorable, her. Also, I want to thank Mrs. Couch, she is also joining us online this evening, her teacher. So Mrs. Couch is also with us as well. So Catalina is a kindergartner in Mrs. Couch's class, and I want to say a couple of awesome words as to why she is receiving this awesome Student Spotlight for this evening. So Catalina is a perfect example of a kindergartner who is kind, respectful, and empathetic toward her friends. She puts others' needs above her own, and she goes out of her way to be a good friend to everybody.
We lost your audio.
No, she's frozen. Frozen. My whole screen is frozen.
Mine is?
So it might be... Am I talking?
She's still talking.
So it might be my Zoom. My connection is unstable, so I'm gonna hide my video. Can you see that? Ms. McNally, are you still there? Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, sorry. My Zoom was unstable, so I just put the video off so that you can continue, and then hopefully it will restabilize this. I will hope I can do it back on. Sorry, please continue.
All right, I'm wondering where I left off, like what was last heard by all of you?
She's a good friend to all.
Yeah, she's a good friend to all. Oh, she's a good friend to all. Okay, awesome. So Mrs. Couch also shared that she is always especially kind to new students who have joined their class mid-year, which is super important, because we always like to welcome our new students. And she works hard to complete her work, and she doesn't give up if something is challenging her, which is a super important trait to have. So join me in congratulating Catalina this evening, and I know her teacher, Mrs. Couch, is here with us as well. Catalina, tomorrow, myself, and Mrs. Couch will give you a photo.
Okay. And I know you have one more, Ms. McNally.
Yes, I do. I have one more, and I did see his little face. Carter, I see you. I see you online, so I'm gonna send you away virtually. So Carter Gill is our second Student Spotlight for the month. He is in first grade, and this is Allsager's class. And Carter, I want to let you know she apologizes if she can't be here with you tonight, but she's gonna give you a big fist bump tomorrow, all right? So am I. So a couple of words about what Mrs. Allsager mentioned and what I know about you, Carter. So first, she... Mrs. Allsager says you're just a kind-hearted and funny child, and I would totally agree with that, and you're also a twin. Is Mia there with you two? Yeah? All right. He is so well-liked by his peers, and what Mrs. Allsager said, which really sticks out to me, is that when you entered first grade, Carter, that you had difficulty adjusting to sitting at your desks, and sometimes you needed some wiggle toys or a special seat to sit in. And once you adjusted to the routines and expectations, you just began to flourish in first grade. Mrs. Allsager said that you made a great effort, and your dedication to learning is so evident. And five months later, you have shown marked growth, and the definition of stamina is being able to do something that is difficult or sometimes takes a long time to do without giving up. Mrs. Allsager said that you have stamina, Carter, lots of it, and you will continue to move forward because of it. And for this reason, she wanted to nominate you, because you're doing such an awesome job in class, so congratulations. So congratulations to Carter Gill on a job well done.
Hi, Ms. McHitten. I hear you. Oh, you can... No.
Is my mic on?
I don't have it.
Batteries maybe?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McNally. I would have sent you the certificate back over to you. You can give that to Carter for me? Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Congratulations. And Ms. McNally, Ms. Couch, and our students who were the welcome to stay on for the duration of our meeting, more feel free to love off. Although I have some great presentations for us tonight, but... So thank you, Ms. McNally. Thanks, Ms. Couch, and thank you to the parents and students, Irving.
Yeah, thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Okay. All right, we're gonna leave this a little bit... Okay, so...
People are gonna need a double A's.
I'll have you have your presentation, just give me one second. Okay. So I'm gonna begin first with my presentation.
She's fine. We'll have my oral presentation. I'll open up to some questions from the board only, and then I will turn the mic over to Mr. McIntosh to give his presentation, and then you'll be able to ask questions of Mr. McIntosh's presentation.
Okay. See if I can move my mic set up. Okay, so it should be good. All right, so tonight I'm presenting on mid-year updates, in particular, our current strategic plan goals and some information...
and some information that is reported mid-year and last year for our SSDS data. Okay, so just to reorient ourselves to our current strategic plan goals that we'll be retiring at the end of the year, either hopefully meeting on those goals or potentially looking to add them as continuing goals into our new strategic plan. So the two that fall under our first goal, the whole child, were updating our preschool curriculum and implementing conscious discipline, which was a response in classroom to support the whole child. Our second goal, to ensure inclusion and support of students for all abilities, races, culture, religions, beliefs, and subsexual orientations, gender, gender identities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And some of the actual items there, we're monitoring the implementation of our Math 6+ class, collecting and reviewing the data on accessibility for honors and AP courses at the high school. Our work with monitoring the tier interventions of proactive strategies for student discipline. Developing a five-year plan to implement full-day preschool for all three and four-year-olds. Providing professional development and coaching on a variety of co-teaching models and practices to promote inclusion and a sense of community. And our third strategic plan goal, which is the district will ensure the implementation of more consistent and effective approaches to differentiated instruction. And under those, the three actual items that we've been working on are providing professional development and implementation of assessment opportunities that emphasize the transfer of skills aligned to lesson objectives. Continuing research and developing SOAR at the high school, which is a class that provides flexible and personalized learning pathways for students. And providing professional development to teachers interested in researching the impact of language-based phrases in a particular in our English language process. So some of our mid-year updates on our strategic goals. The first one for Goal 1 is our preschool curriculum. I know that in mid-fall, Ms. McNally came to an amazing presentation of Tools of the Mind. So I'm really happy with the district's move toward Tools of the Mind curriculum. So we've been, one of the things we've been doing is providing ongoing professional development and coaching to implement in the curriculum. In addition, we've been still conducting site visits because what we're looking at is, we had our initial implementation and professional development, and then how are we continuing that? What does that look like for districts that are a little bit more advanced in the curriculum? And what are the things that we can sort of foreshadow as areas of support as we continue to implement Tools of the Mind? I know some of the important members joining on site is to see our preschool in action. And to see the students in the classroom find a lot of success in language acquisition is really remarkable with Tools of the Mind. So you can see I tried to capture some pictures of their play planning, which was really awesome. So they come up with ideas to play plan. And with that, you can see on the one picture that she, or he or they are writing lines, drawing lines. And that's so that they understand how many words would be in their sentence when they decide what they want to play. And that's early acquisition of language for our students. And there's a lot of fun play, and the students have been doing an excellent job of working through that. The teachers have been really impressed with what they've seen so far in the classroom. So we're making great headway toward implementing our new curriculum. In addition, K5, we've been working on providing ongoing and professional development, including resources for combining responsive classroom and conscious discipline. What we found, remember our conversations last year when Ms. McNally presented on conscious discipline, was that our students, responsive classroom wasn't enough to meet the issues we were seeing with students coming back from COVID with conflict resolution strategies. So conscious discipline was an additional add-on of a tier-one intervention in the classroom as a way to help students really work through conflict resolution strategies. So we've provided ongoing professional development and resources for them, which includes strategies which are being implemented in the classroom and with school counselors. In addition, they've been still continuing their work with whole-school meetings that they call family meetings. Again, trying to work with that language and conscious discipline, in keeping with the sphere of the work that we do with responsive classroom. And there's daily mornings and meetings, daily morning meetings and pre-meets as well. In terms of our second goal, I'm just gonna see if I can move us. So here's, so y'all can see this if you're with us in person. So our second goal included a monitoring of our Math 6+, so before we even, before COVID, we were working on redesigning our middle school math program to provide more heterogeneous classes. So we started at sixth grade, so that's our Math 6+. So really, what happened was, we tried to start it before COVID, COVID hit. And then coming back from COVID was a little problematic. So the way we look at it in terms of full implementation was 22, 23. So really, last year was what we consider our first full year of full implementation, just because everything was disjointed because of COVID. So sort of re, although we've been having discussions and working on it for some time, the data that we're collecting really that'll be meaningful to us is starting from last year. And what we're looking for in terms of success, for those who don't remember from a couple of years ago when we presented on this, was closing the achievement gap. So the trapping and redesigning our middle school math program. The research suggests that when done with fidelity, it will help close the achievement gap. And so what we'll see hopefully over time in our data is that the gap closes, so our students are more successful in Math 7 or pre-algebra. In addition, we hope to see an increase in enrollment in pre-algebra because our students might be gaining more mathematical fluency and authenticity toward being more successful at the pre-algebra level. Data will be reported after the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Test results are made publicly available, so I don't have those yet. But as they come out, we will report back and follow that trend through our data. Ms. Saka, our STEM supervisor, works with teachers to track the data by standard. So she has this amazing spreadsheet that she keeps with the teachers and tracks each student by the standards. In particular, looking at our seventh, the exposure to seventh and even eighth grade standards at the Math 6 level, and including the Math 6 standard. So we're really sort of working on a standards-based approach to monitoring our students to make sure they're finding success. And I know she's been providing explicit communication and exposure to seventh-grade standards and working with the teachers to do that. So the students and the parents should know when they're working on lessons and learning opportunity, where specifically there is exposure to the seventh-grade standards, where there are opportunities to tackle the seventh-grade standards, and so on. So it's not just an add-on and sort of to see what happens when students do it. It's a real hyper-focus with explicit communication. And then I know that they're continuing to work on implementing complex tasks and differentiated instruction. The district purchased EdJams, which is a middle school math program which does a really great job of providing differentiated assessments and learning opportunities for students as well. So we've been working in both of those areas. So movement on our Goal 2, 4, which is AP and honors accessibility. So if you can recall, we've been working to break down all of the barriers to have open access to all of our higher-level classes at the high school level. And the hope of this is to allow students that might come from disadvantaged suburbs, some of our socio-economically disadvantaged students, students of color, and our special ed students, an opportunity to take those courses. We did found a disproportionality of those students enrolled in courses in the past. And we're trying to break down barriers to increase enrollment. So I know that we've already removed barriers such as teacher recommendations, prerequisites, and things like that. We have stuff that is suggested for students to find success, but they're not a number of requirements. So there's no overriding. Students can just decide to take an AP or an honors course as they see fit. We've been offering study skills support. So one of the areas that we wanted to make sure was, we had cohort of students over the summer to try to do a summer academy. We didn't find much success with that, but we're still continuing to work on it. But we do offer study skills support and tutoring after school for students that are in need. We have, oh, I'm getting, hold on. I'm gonna stop. I'm gonna stop my video. I'm getting instability on my Zoom. So we've been offering paper tutoring to offer as a resource as well. Unfortunately, at this point, we're not seeing the positive impact we thought we would be having. Our first-time students are really struggling in these classes. So I know Ms. Saka and Ms. Young are working with the school counselors to constantly review and analyze the data. So what we're doing is, we're working to collect a more accurate representation of the existing students. We're looking at historical data for trends. And what we'd like to do is implement more interventions and support at the lower grades. So by the time the students get to the high school, hopefully they'll find more support in those classes, number one. And number two, that they have more of a growth mindset to, to be able to tackle some of the challenges they might face with more rigorous honors or AP classes. So I know that Ms. Young will be attending our next Equity and Excellence Committee meeting to share more specifically about the work they're doing for this goal. In addition, we were looking at monitoring tier interventions for discipline. So these school leadership teams, so each school has their own school leadership team, and they are reviewing the data very frequently. They're working to develop and provide more support for tier-one interventions in the classroom. And this includes the responsive classroom, conscious discipline, and restorative practices. In addition, we are piloting a character education program called Responsive Advisory at the middle and high schools. So I know that before the holiday, the winter break, some of the middle school teachers and Ms. Ralzker came onto Equity and Excellence Committee pleading to share some information about Responsive Advisory. So we're implementing that, as well as implementing more positive behavioral supports. So more of a PDSI approach to looking at positive supports for students. In addition, in Goal 2, we're looking at our preschool expansion plan. So we are currently in year one of our preschool expansion to offer holding preschool expansion for three and four-year-olds under the governor's initiative. Next year will be our year two, and we already have a plan to expand our program by two additional classrooms. So as part of the five-year plan, what the state wants to see is that we're making good faith effort to continue to expand our plan. So we have our year two to expand by two additional classrooms. We're still exploring options to lease spaces to expand in the coming years. So that is the plan moving into the spring, and then hopefully the work that myself, Mr. Rosa, and Ms. McNally will do over the summer, is to really focus our efforts on trying to find a place that we could lease to house maybe another classroom or two as we expand into year three. So as that information comes up, we will present that and by what our options are for leasing space in the coming years. And then we're looking to approve a new architect firm, which will be tonight, so we saw on the agenda. So we will hire, we'll have two architect firms of record, our current one, DMR, because they are still currently working on projects within the district, and a new architectural firm. And that will allow us an opportunity to get our current buildings to offer more creative ideas for the construction of preschool class spaces. Additionally, for Goal 2, we are doing professional development on co-teaching models for inclusion. So we want to provide a more inclusive learning opportunity, learning environment for our special education students. So part of that comes with professional development on co-teaching models. So we hired a consultant who presented for the leadership team on her plan on inclusion, on co-teaching, her background in co-teaching, and the work that she's going to be doing with our child study team and teachers. So she presented for the leadership team. She also presented for the child study team and conducted classroom visits as well to get a lay-in plan and to collect more data. She is working with the child study team, I'm sorry, we're working with the child study team and the Board of Ed for budgeting to provide more inclusive classrooms at the middle school. It's a good place to start. So one of the areas that myself and the Finance and Facilities Committee, Mr. Rosa, and the Child Study Team is looking at doing is to really provide more inclusion classes versus the self-contained classes at the middle school level. In order to do that successfully, the teachers have to be prepared to make sure that they're meeting the needs of special education students. And we're looking at a whole lot of targeted professional development on co-teaching models and least restrictive learning environments that will start this summer in preparing our teachers for the upcoming school year. For our third goal, on comprehensive instruction, we're continuing to provide professional development for assessments. During our professional learning community meetings and department meetings, teachers are working to unpack the New Jersey Student Learning Standard test questions. In particular, our teachers are working with their content area supervisors to focus on vocabulary use and skills needed for success when taking the state assessment questions. So we're not really focusing on this idea of test prep or say, but looking at our assessments that we're implementing, both formative and summative assessments, and how we can embed more of that focus language that the state assessment might use in our assessment practices, and what those skills are needed for success. So for example, the test is an online test. So we want to make sure that unless a child has an IP that says they get a paper test, it's an online test. So we want to expose our students to how they can successfully take a test online so that they can be successful in taking the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment online, you know, using an online calculator, things like that. So just little areas that we can support our students. In addition, we're working to integrate higher-level questions on local assessments as part of, as part of the lessons we do, both formatively and summatively in our assessments without it feeling like test prep. In addition, we're researching SOAR, which is a flexible learning pathways that we're doing at the high school. Though last year, we talked about getting students' general certifications in which they were able to meet the requirement for either their two-and-a-half-credit physics class or a career or type ed class. So we're still continuing to explore some of those flexible learning pathways so that our students feel connected to the school, that there are classes that they want to take. And also, some of our students, if they get a general certification or something like that, they could then use that as a career path or, you know, college pathway. So it could really meet the needs of all of our students. Right now, we're, so we're continuing to explore those learning pathways. And right now, we're in addition, in the process of working with Middlesex College to acquire dual enrollment programming. In particular, for our computer science classes, we've been trying to explore dual enrollment for some time. However, Middlesex College has very specific requirements on what the teachers need to meet in order to qualify to be Middlesex College professors, especially educators, to be able to implement the Middlesex College version of the course in our courses. So in the past, we've had teachers, for example, math teachers that were interested, but if they didn't have a master's in the subject area or they didn't meet certain requirements, Middlesex wouldn't take them. So I've been working with Dr. McCormick at Middlesex College to really work on the flexibility of those requirements because we have some great, amazing master teachers at the high school level. And it would be really great if we could see in some of their skill sets, maybe like the time they've been teaching a subject area or something like that to replace some of the other requirements that they have. And I'm excited to share that Middlesex College has, has looked at our computer science teacher, our new computer science teacher, what her credentials are, and are providing that flexibility. So she's interested in doing that. So we're going to hopefully start that work in the spring to the summer so that next year, potentially, we could provide dual enrollment options for our computer science classes. And lastly, we're continuing to provide professional development on language-based racism, in particular for English Language Arts. Recently, we had Philly Children's Movement in, in our current professional development session. And they facilitated a session on our in-service study for Irving and Bartlestaff. The topic was Radical Morning Meeting: Building Community While Building Skills for, oh, sorry, the typical goal, joy and justice, and Develop Shared Understanding of Anti-Racist and Cultural-Sustaining Pedagogies. So we've been providing professional development on, for Irving and Bartlestaff in that area as well. So we're continuing to move that goal forward. So moving on, the last part of my presentation tonight is on our Student Safety Data System Report. So it's what we, our acronym, SSDS. What we have to do is every, twice a year, we report data to the state through the SSDS report. And it captures two types of information. The first is incidences of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, or bullying, weapon offenses, substance offenses, restraint, seclusion, and any other incident leading to removal from school, and also our gift trainings and programs. So that's a lot of data we report to the state, but this particular report highlights these particular areas. So the due dates for those reports, so this is the current set of information for, this happens to be for public schools. So what we do is incidents that are reported from September to December. Our deadline for submitting that date to the state is the end of January. And then it's reported to the board and governing authority anywhere between January 1 and June 30. So we just have a responsibility to report to the board before the end of the year. And then incidences, trainings, and programs. Then, and then there's another set from July 1 to December 30. So there's two chunks of time in which we report our data. So a couple of things to remember that I know I've spoken about in my previous superintendent report, but just to highlight a couple of things about the SSDS report. The first is multiple offenses, one incident. So a single incident can consist of sort of multiple types. So if there are, for example, if there are 10 students involved... So if there are, for example, if there are 10 students involved in a fight, that's 10 incidences of fights. It could be one fight, but reported as 10 incidences. So it's important to note how the data is communicated to SSDS and then how that information looks on the slides. So what the information that we present doesn't drill down that deeply, but those are the nuances of the data. So another example, a student might make a criminal threat toward another student while holding a knife. This would be entered into the SSDS as a single incident of criminal threat and weapon use. So just another example of a single incident that consists of multiple incident types as well. And then I said multiple offenders and multiple incidences. I just wanted to give a brief overview of the common used definitions by the SSDS. So this is information that our school administrators are trained on in terms of understanding a fight. So if you see a fight on our SSDS report, it's a mutual engagement in a physical confrontation in which the offenders understood that confrontation may result in bodily injury to either party. It does not include a verbal confrontation or a minor confrontation such as a shoving match. Each participant must be classified as an offender. So in order for it to be classified as a fight, it must meet this criteria. An assault is a person attempts to cause, or purposely, knowingly, or recklessly causes bodily injury to another person. A physical restraint is the use of personal restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move all or a portion of their body. And just for reference, our staff are trained in handle and care. That is the program that we use. It's de-escalation techniques first, and then physical restraints second. So anytime you see a physical restraint on a report, it's by trained staff that are trained in order to do that. A simple threat is attempting by physical menace, a verbal threat, to put another in fear of bodily injury. The offender knew that the threat could make the victim feel fearful, and I know I reported on that at, on my last superintendent report. And then some other common used definitions or other incidents leading to removal, which might be new to a lot of people's understanding, is any other incident not listed in the guidebook that takes place on or off school grounds that results in a disciplinary removal for at least one half of the day must be reported. There are many other definitions in there, but I gave a couple of the key ones that I think are on our radar. Others for substance abuse, weapons possession, I felt that those were a little bit more self-explanatory. But if you Google the SSDS report for the New Jersey Department of Education, you can see all of the definitions and all of this information. So our reports, so what I wanted to do first was go back a year. So I know it came to light because there was an article that was written about the number of incidences that we had, and what uncovered was that those incidences were inaccurately reported. And what we did was, we tried to go back to the state, however, the state does not let you change what you already put in. So what we did do though, this year was our current data, we went back and cleaned up to make sure we're reporting accurate information. So what I will report on for our mid-year is reported accurately. I can't go back and change the 22 timeline, but what I can show is that from last year, the information that was reported, and then the staff did go, as per my request, update it, so that you can see what was accurate, what should have been reported but wasn't reported accurately. So this is from September to December of last year. So you can see the high school had a total of seven incidences. They had two violence, five substances, and to make their total of seven. The high, middle school reported 44. They originally had 31 as violence, but the real number is actually six. So our total number of incidences is not accurate. So the violence was six, vandalism was two, and substances was 10, and weapons was one. Bartle had one total incident, and Irving had none. And then you can see the confirmed hips. So of the violent incidences below, you can see, so remember our last, my last presentation, I shared that violence is broken down into subcategories as well. So for the violent incidences at the high school, one was sexual contact, and one was an assault. And at the middle school of the sixth, two were fights and four were assaults. Okay, and then in terms of other incidences leading to removal, the middle, the high school had 27, and middle school reported zero, but it was actually 22. So what they were reporting as violence was actually not violent. They reported that information inaccurately, and what they were was under the category of other incidences leading to removal. Bartle had two, and Irving had zero. In restraints, last year, high school had one, and middle school had one, Bartle had 23, and Irving had four. In terms of hip trainings completed, the high school had one hip training, middle school had four, Bartle had 26, Irving had eight in terms of trainings. And then programs completed, the high school had, conducted three hip programs or related programs for culture and climate, middle school had three, Bartle 21, and Irving 19. So January of 2023 to June of 2023, so again, the second half of last year, high school had eight total incidences, two violence and five substances, one confirmed hip. The middle school originally reported 60 total incidences. They originally reported that 43 were violence, three were vandalism, eight were substances, and then you had six confirmed hips. When they went back to the data and looked at it, they had zero violence, and then the three vandalism, eight substances. Middle school had eight total incidences, four violence, two vandalism, two weapons, and Irving had none. Of the violent incidences at the high school, two of them were fights. So which means that they misrepresented the issue of removing the students from the school, and it was actually under other incidences, other incidences leading to removal. So they had 45, high school had 18, Bartle had 11, and Irving had none. Of the restraints for the second half of last year, high school had none, middle school had two, Bartle had 10, and Irving had 10. In terms of trainings completed for the second half of the year, for hip trainings, high school had none, middle school had none, Bartle had 15, and Irving had one. In terms of hip programs completed, high school had none for the second half of the year only, middle school had none, and Bartle had 19, and Irving had none. So again, that was last year's data, just to be transparent that there was some misrepresentation of that data. Again, I can't go back last year to the state and change that, but, but now it's at least accurately represented in, on our local reports. But we were able to make sure that our current data is accurate, ensuring that the staff members that enter, staff member that enters that data correctly understands how they're entering it correctly. So for this year, for our report, period one, from September 1 to December 31, the high school has had 14 total incidences, one incident of violence, seven incidences of substances, and one incident of weapons. And they had six confirmed hips. The middle school has had 33 total incidences, 21 of them violence, two vandalism, eight substances, one weapons, and one confirmed hip. Bartle has had no total incidences, and Irving has no total incidences in these categories. Of the violent incidences at the high school, the one was a fight. For the middle school, five of them were assaults, 10 of them were fights. Again, please remember that in some cases, that a fight could have multiple people, which means it's reported as multiple incidences. So theoretically, this could have been one fight with 10 kids, right? So just to keep that in mind, that it's not 10 fights collectively. Each person has to be reported as a fight. 10 fights, two sexual conduct, and four simple threats. For the first half of the year, the high school reported 17 incidences leading to removal, no restraints. So far, for the first half of the year, they had one hip treat, one hip training completed, and two hip programs completed. Of the middle school, they had 32 incidences that led to removal, zero restraints, six trainings of hip completed by staff, and seven programs completed. Bartle had 57 incidences leading to removal, 15 restraints, 25 hip trainings completed, and 30 hip programs completed. Irving had eight students, eight incidences leading to removal, they had 12 restraints, eight hip trainings completed, and 15 programs completed. So a lot of data and a lot of information. This presentation will be made to the public as part of the board notes, so that it will be fully accessible to happen to, you know, go back and look at that data more collectively. And again, into the summer, we'll report on the second half of the year. So in summary, I feel that the district is making progress towards strategic plan goals. We look forward to setting new goals for the next five years, knowing that areas that we're still working on, we still continue to work on, regardless of those ending our goals or not, we're still committed to them. We still continue to monitor data on student achievement, attendance, discipline, mental health, and things like that. So my mid-year updates didn't include our progress and our expansion of our mental health, and our teen and tween center, and things like that, or social emotional learning, expansion of our SEL lab to the middle school. So there's a lot of things that we do on a daily basis that would be hard in my new role, I reporting on all of that, but we do continue to monitor a lot of different data points collectively as a team to make sure we're making decisions in the best interest of students and to make sure we're supporting them. Obviously, based on the inaccurate report of our discipline data through SSDS, we are continuing to tighten up systems and processes for data collection and reporting. We're continuing to communicate updates throughout the year, and we will continue to provide support for students. So I know I shared at my last superintendent presentation areas in which we are supporting students, and I just wanted to reiterate that, especially looking at our SSDS report and that data. For example, at the middle school, I know we've seen an uptick. We've put into place already a middle school youth safety specialist, and I know the students have been sharing positive comments about forming relationships with our youth safety specialists. We've been piloting advisory, and so far, the middle school's actually been a lot more successful on ways, I think it's been hit or miss, for its implementation, but I know the middle school had, it's, we're seeing already some, some great feedback from the students and the staff, and we'll continue to monitor that data through surveys. We have some, some pre-data, pre-advisory data, and we'll look at some post-advisory data as well. We always continue to provide more training on restorative practices. In fact, at our February in-service, Tyler Rooster was here presenting to our staff on ways that we can provide more restorative practices and circles for our students. And in addition, I know last year, we started the process, we hired a student assistance counselor, but Ms. Lane is an amazing resource. So she's been last year really getting to know the lady and working with our students, and she's been expanding our services for substance abuse and working on restorative practices with our students. In additional, additionally, peer leadership groups to really connect our students with each other, to provide mentorship and leadership opportunities for students in, in the world of the teen center. So I know that we're continuing to monitor that. I know some of our data on substance abuse has, has an uptake as well, in terms of marijuana use and vaping. We've been, we started installing and piloting the vape detectors at the middle and high school to provide safe places for students to go to the bathroom. So we're working on some, some of these key areas to provide support for students. So we constantly are monitoring the data, and we're constantly looking at ways that we can support the students. Some of our decisions for implementation of programs or resources take a little bit more time and a little bit more money, but we make sure that we, we do those. And that's it. So I will, because I'll keep sharing, just in case, or maybe I'll stop sharing, and get the next presentation I've been running, and I'll open up the floor to questions from the board. Yeah, so we're going to do questions for my presentation first, and then after that, I'll toss the mic over to Mr. Akikawa, and he can do his presentation on the board after care program, and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. Okay.
Next question. Do we have any feedback from the teachers or students in the middle school, high school? Oh, sorry. Do we have any feedback from the students and middle, teachers at the middle school and high school about the functionality of the vape detectors?
So I know we just started them. I think they were working on figuring out how to like stick it with your phone, and they were working with the staff and the facilities and leadership in terms of like who's getting the words, how we're using it, how does it work, the sensitivity of them. So right now, we're at the sort of pilot stage of implementing them, because it comes with a lot of nuances and a lot of like sort of technical work that needs to be done. But we could certainly ask other names in the next age meeting.
I had a question about monitoring the Math 6 program. I know that the main balls are trying to close the gap between Math 7 and pre-algebra, with the hope for increase in enrollment in pre-algebra. Are we also looking at, is there any increase in enrollment in algebra from the primary Math 6A plus, you know, a lot of those kids, that's pretty much the difference, pre-algebra or algebra? So just wondering for that.
Right now, we have, right now, we have level flat, flat data right now. That's the hope and the goal. That's where we'll see what we're doing is working. So that is on the radar. So Ms. Saka has a, has a lot of that information in that data. And so right now, we're at sort of a level.
Algebra's part of that.
Yeah, algebra's part of that, yeah. But I think over time, we're hoping, we're hoping to see more, I mean, that achievement gap closed, so that more students are successful in Math 7 and successful in pre-algebra. And hopefully, over time, our students are, and we're working the K8, the K5 level, that students would be wildly successful in Math 6, and over time, really only smaller sections of Math 7 as well. But that's probably a long, longer-term plan, but for now, that we're seeing that our student achievement is increasing, you know, over, over those particular groups.
Thank you. I also have a question about AP honors. Maybe, did you have some?
Sure. So I, I did have a question about the AP honors, and I don't know if it's the same question, but one of the, I was just wondering if there's any data or any benchmarks on how the opening it up, making it more accessible to everyone is affecting, if it is affecting or how it is affecting, if it is, the quality of education for those classes specifically?
So we haven't seen any decrease in the quality of the education of our AP or AP honors classes. Where we're seeing the issue is that our students aren't as successful. Our first-time students that we're tracking aren't as successful as we want them to be. So we're really looking at trying to figure out supports, not only at that level, but also middle school and downward. So if we're working to close the achievement gap, hopefully our students will find more success at that level, they have more of the executive functioning skills potentially to function there. So I know that they're working on trying to figure out what it, what it is that's a concern of our students not finding success, and really focusing to try to figure out how we support the students, not only at the high school level, but, but going to, you know, middle school and even elementary school. So it hasn't impacted the nature of, it's not that students at an AP or AP honors classes are getting less than program. What we're finding is those students that are first-timer is taking those are not as successful as their peers. And so that's really our focus. So instruction stays the way instruction is, curriculum does not change. You approved all the curriculum, so that stays the same. It's just trying to figure out ways to meet the students where they're at and provide them more success at those, at those higher-level classes.
Just as a follow-up to that, I know we removed the barrier of teacher recommendations in the represents, but are we still sharing that information with the students and with their families?
Upon, upon their request of the school council to do it, so what the school councils do are supposed, they meet with each individual student and talk about what their goals are, in particular, what their strengths are. So if a student really likes to write and has a strength for that, maybe that's an area that they pursue for a higher-level class versus an area that they might struggle with a little bit more, or might not be intrinsically motivated to do. Because oftentimes, especially at the, when you get to those higher-level AP classes, an AP is a college-owned class. So if we think about an AP class, a college-owned class that runs September or August through May, you know, it's a real, like, a shorter timeframe than the, what we have, we use September to June, so to speak, that, you know, by the time they're prepping for that test, it's about April. So they actually have to cover almost like a whole year of college stuff from September to really April-ish by the time they start to prepare for that exam and things like that. So it's really finding where a student might be more intrinsically motivated to be successful as well, especially at an AP level. So the work is being done with the school counselors. So I, Ms. Saco, and Ms. Young, Ms. Young is going to come to the next Equity and Excellence Committee meeting to actually talk about the work that she's doing with the school counselors, as our lead counselor in the district, and our Ms. Asamoah's leadership, to actually look at where students, where we can hopefully find success, what the data is showing us, and and specifically tracking students in terms of what their requests are and how we can support them. So a lot of it is individual conversations with students to say, oh, you know, you're intrinsically motivated here. Do you want to try it? What can we do to support you? What does that look like? How much time can you put toward a particular class? How long would this take you? So a lot of it is those, those ongoing conversations that our school counselors have with students.
And now with their families though, suggestions?
They certainly can, absolutely, they certainly can.
They can request them. So where this is coming from is that I think there are some parents that didn't really know that this was removed. So the parents are taking the class and they just assumed, oh, they were nominated for this class and they weren't really prepared. And I would have been grateful if they could have had a conversation with their student family.
Yeah, so we, I mean, I could talk to Ms. Samao and remind the, remind her to talk to the school counselors that when they're having these conversations with students, our students select their own courses at the high school level to encourage them to talk with their parents. If they don't feel comfortable, of course, the school counselors can reach out. But our school counselors don't call every single parent to share the, you know, the, um, their potential course offerings that they want to take. It's more about the students being able to share that at the high school level with, with their parents or guardians or caregivers.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So it doesn't seem all that surprising just removing the barrier to AP and students opting in. The pedagogy changing, right? And AP requires, you know, its own content and so it's a little less flexible. I think that's very different than the, the change of the sixth grade where the pedagogy was changing and was sort of challenging, but providing more entry points for students. So it seems to me that if more students are moving to AP, then it's probably about providing additional support. Most likely structural, because some kids might have access to tutoring. I don't know if the kids were pushing in necessarily have access to that. Or some, some, some additional, you know, program that, that could help bridge the AP curriculum because the pedagogy isn't going to change. And there isn't necessarily a bridge and there isn't necessarily differentiated instruction. So my question.
Yeah, my question on the AP class too, I'm unsure what the availability for something like AP Psych versus AP Bio or something like that. Well, actually, a good point, we can, I'll look into it with the paper tutoring. Cause I know paper tutoring is a great resource and provides that help. I know our National Society provides tutoring. And then we have two teachers that are sort of our AP honors cohort coaches that provide that level of support as well. So maybe looking specifically at what areas that are, maybe there's certain AP honors classes where our students are not finding as much success and seeing if the supports we had in place target that.
I've just got to report that we can't, I can't be heard and DM.
Okay, so make sure you speak, you have to speak literally to the mic.
Yes.
That was pretty close.
Okay.
Yes, I just.
Oh, okay.
Um, I have a question.
Oh, well, I'm just going to timeout because I think.
Ethan has a question.
Okay, you want to get him on first and then we'll go back to the other room?
Okay, thanks everybody. Sorry for being home today. Just very sick, isn't the man awake? Anyone hear you okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so first of all, I want to say very quick turnaround time on the SBS, SSDS data. I have some questions about interpretation, but I just want to applaud Dr. Saska, you and your staff who probably burned within oil more than a few times to get this together. So I think it's a lot of work and I want to acknowledge that. I am interested in this AP, you know, issue. And when I was in high school, no one took AP Chem with Mr., uh, uh, what's his name? Without taking Gen Chem. Gen Chem was a tough course and you took it. And no matter how smart you were, you didn't take AP Chem without taking Gen Chem. You didn't take AP Physics without taking Physics. You didn't take AP Calculus without taking the toughest level of math you could. I can't believe people are surprised that students who aren't prepared to take a college-owned course, which is what this is, are not doing poorly. I mean, I respect immensely the goal of opening AP courses to more people who don't think of themselves maybe as AP, at AP level students. We should open these courses to people who are ready for them. But opening to students who aren't ready for them is just second blood for failure. And, and I find it very hard to believe that, that the, the quality of the education for students who are ready for it is not being diminished. Because if there are students who are really struggling with basic principles, how can a teacher, you know, focus on the really advanced stuff if they're trying to make sure kids who are pretty far behind don't get even further? So that is a clear case where like the goal is laudable, but it's just, it's just wrong. It's just wrong. And it's going to diminish the quality of education and it's not helping the kids who may be currently in this class that aren't ready for them. So as a strategic goal, I would certainly think this needs to be revised, like the whole thing needs to be rethought. It is not good policy. I'm looking at AP, the college board website right here. And here's what it says, anyone take AP, question and answer. Some high schools let any student enroll in an AP course as long as the student has taken the recommended college prereference courses. Other high schools have additional rules, dot, dot, dot. It is not, it's not even contemplating that a high school would let students take AP courses without prereference or a teacher saying this kid is brilliant and doesn't need the free requisite. So I hope we rethink this particular policy. Uh, maybe there's more commentary on this topic. I have some more questions about the interpretation of the SSDS data.
So the, so we definitely can talk about this further in Equity Excellence Committee meeting. I will say anecdotally, we actually have had some freshmen that went into AP Bio freshman year and were wildly successful. We played a blanket statement for all of our students, although I'm saying that we're not there yet with the goal. I will say that some of our first year students are taking, taking honors and AP classes and are successful. What I'm saying is that we're not totally there. I can't say that 100% of our first time students taking an AP or honors class are successful. We're not at 100%. I'm not sure if we'll ever be at 100%, but I will say, you know, the idea is, is to break down those barriers and we're monitoring closely. So I don't want to make a blanket statement that our students aren't successful at all because we are finding success, but we're, we're still work in progress and I think there's still more supports that needs to be done and more communication with our students.
Can I say a couple of things? I think there was some assumptions in what Ethan's sharing that it would be challenged. I think this is about the support structures, not just about moving kids in. And there are often kind of assumptions that things are going to be dumped down as we move kids into those courses and that often isn't the case. If you look at a lot of data about moving kids in, it's not that the, there's a lot of concern about the kids who are high in class like lowering their achievement and that rarely ever happens. So, yeah, I, I just think, I don't think we know these things. Uh, I think it's about investigating them and seeing what's happening with AP. If there are some supports that can be provided and kids can be successful, why wouldn't we do that? And so I, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I personally don't necessarily agree.
Hey, just really quick, I know, very quick. We talked about how we're doing in the course, but we didn't speak to, we met the goal of, are we actually reaching more quotes from diverse backgrounds? And I'm just curious about that, if that's one of the goals as well.
Yeah, so that data will be shared with Equity Excellence so we can move forward. I don't have it available yet. Ms. Young is working on that with Ms. Saka. But yes, we are seeing that more students are attempting those higher level classes, which is great. Some of the students are finding success and others are not. And we have to, want to, you know, celebrate the success of the students that are achieving and, you know, supporting the students that are not there yet. Growth mindset. Okay.
Okay. Can I ask my question? Uh, this is about a different topic. I know we're going to talk about this in more detail in Equity Excellence and we'll report out. But back to Math Six Plus.
What do you question?
Oh, sorry. Back to Math Six Plus. Uh, my question there was just about the process or the tools, I should say, I'm using to evaluate the success of the program. I know that you pointed to the standardized testing endpoint. Are there any other indicators that we're using to have a more comprehensive assessment of its success?
Yeah, so our students take local assessments where they do quarterly assessments and we're tracking that data as well. So we have our local assessments. In addition, we, through EdgeM, they have assessments that we're looking at that are leveled and are differentiated as well as EdgeMastic as a tool for actually map instruction, K-12 as a way to monitor that data.
Okay, good. I didn't see that before.
Yes.
I was doing that. And then, um, I'm sorry, is there something you want to say about the topic?
No, no, it was a different topic.
Okay, so let me just ask a couple more questions. Um, this here, I'm sorry, these are my notes, I'm just going through. Uh, so excited to hear about the co-teaching professional development. So happy to hear that we've been talking about that in the district for a long time. How can we, yes, we promote our programming for children with disabilities and students and welcome students to come back into the district, but also seeing those students included in our classes more broadly is something that I think we have a lot of work to do in that area. And I think my question is, we have the support coming in for the PD. What, what is the plan sort of for oncoming support? This can be started a conversation for Equity Excellence in the future. I'm sure we will have discussions, but I don't know if there was anything you wanted or could share about that now. What is the plan for support as we start?
Yeah, for support.
What kind of numbers are like, what's the scope that we're talking about this first year at the school that we sent? Which has a number of classes.
Yeah, so it's going to be all, so we're, to work on a full inclusion model takes some time because a lot of it is working with parents of students with disabilities to talk about that in an IEP setting. So in order to change a child's placement from maybe a self-contained class to an inclusion model, that has to be a conversation as part of the IEP conversations. And that all happens in the spring. So a number of classes and, and how we could have for ICR, I'm not really sure yet. We have some projections. The, the professional development will start over the summer. What that looks like and the dates are to be determined. Right now, we have to wait for the passing of the budget before we start our process for what we do over the summer. So once we approve the budget, we can then go ahead and move forward with our planning and preparation. Once that's done, I'll definitely have Ms. Kobola share that, but it's on the radar. And I know she's been working with Dr. Edwards for a while. Then, you know, maybe at some point we'll have Dr. Edwards come in and, and share some with Ms. Kobola, some information on our co-teaching.
That's great. I was thinking more so what we could, what we think we could accommodate. I know you really won't.
Yeah, unfortunately I don't know. That will be the spring, I'll know more information.
About what we think.
What we can accommodate.
Yeah. Um, and then the Mills, Steves County, Doolan, Groming, I'm excited about that. And I would just hope that we put that on Equity Excellence discussion in terms of the consultant coming in and, um, oh, I'm sorry, kind of scratchy a little. So I'm sorry to take that, to mention that. That is, uh, my, it's got to be some here. Okay, language-based racism in elementary school, that was the comment I wish I had. Uh, but let's hear more about the new consultant that you brought in. And again, it's not a discussion for tonight, but for Equity Excellence. Cause I know this was a, it can be, I think, a challenging approach to reducing the kind of early onset disparities in reading and how that starts in the elementary school level. We're going to move into Title II as we're talking about those opportunity gaps. So I'm happy to hear we're looking at it forward and looking at it from the equity races perspective. But I know that just processing that and developing the professional skills to recognize that combat it is going to be an authentic process. So we'd like to hear more about it. And then, I'm sorry, the incident data entry. I, I'm just unsure about and clear on how we have such a huge number of misreported, like how were so many incidents misperceived as violent? I, and I don't know if I'm the only one that that kind of question came to mind, but I'm glad we figured it out, I guess. But I'm assuming that we figured out sort of where that's misreporting apart, but it doesn't happen again.
Without doing this delicately and legally, because I can't speak on personnel matters. However, there are particular members of our staff that are trained in doing this. A member of our staff misplaced notes and did things that they were under the training. And as they were entering the data, they entered the data inaccurately. It was identified, we corrected the issue, provided training and support. Moving forward, so that is something that'll be, you know, on the radar when the, when the data comes in to make sure we're looking at it very, very carefully. You're welcome.
I don't think there's anything we can do, but I just want to, you know, it seems only your, your mic analysis works for people at home and there's quite a lot of people locked on. So just tell the guys that they can't hear the rest of us speaking.
Yeah, we haven't even checked before we started. So again, the louder you can speak in mic, the better. I know, I understand, I understand. But sometimes too, when you move away, you move your head, sometimes that changes. Like you have to, like your lips touch the mic. I think that'll help too.
I need a spit screen.
Yeah. That's obvious. We're, we're trying our best. That's, again, they've checked the game, the audio, we tested everything before the meeting. Anything was able to hear us at home, so we're all looking for the best here. Okay.
Uh, my question. Thank you. Uh, so I am, like Monique, surprised at the number of incidents that were reclassified as other incidents of removal. But it's such a broad term and there are so many incidents of removal, it's concerning because whenever you have an incident of removal, that child is losing instructions. Okay? Uh, so my question is, are teams at schools looking at trends in these other incidents of removal just as you would look at trends in data violence? Is it still really, really important to tackle these incidents? Even though they're not violent, it's still really important that we maintain like, you know, a safe environment for our kids, but also keep them in class as much as possible?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So what I'll do is I'll go back to the school leadership teams, cause I know they review their data routinely. So when the school leadership team meets, there's a subgroup of each school leadership team that is a disciplinary action group. And what I can do is recommend and see if they're looking at that data. And I have meetings with the APs, actually this week I do with them monthly. So we can review to see if they're looking at that data as well. If not, we can certainly recommend that.
But I thought, I'm sorry, I thought we had a discussion that they are looking at all of the discipline data, the individual teams at individual schools.
So they, so they do, they look at it by, by students. So the particulars, so they're looking, they just look at, they're looking at it differently. So they're not looking at the overall list of here's our SSDS report and looking at that. They're looking at students in particular. So every student that has a disciplinary infraction that leads to removal, whether it's in school suspension or out of school suspension, they're looking at that data and subgroup information, so they're looking at the whole child. But what would be interesting, I think what Allison's saying is looking at it generally and saying, of the X amount of students that are, you know, being removed from the data, so more globally at that particular data point, parsing that out, what are the categories of that and what are the issues happening within there? So they look at each student individually, but just looking at maybe collectively, what is removing them from the learning environment? Yeah.
Um, I'm just really quick.
Oh, sorry, I just want to get to Mr. McCallum for his presentation, but I know he's waiting patiently to present as well.
Really, really good. So I did notice that, so we corrected the violence to six from the previous year. And this year we're at 21.
Yes.
And so I'm just curious, you said something to multiple incidents and one incident that you've put in multiple times. It only happened for a year, so that just seems notable that we might want to go back and look at those members.
Absolutely. Okay, so I am going to welcome Mr. McCallum for listening now. And then Mr. Call McCall, I'm our new director of our before and after care program. So I'm just giving one second here to share screen on Zoom and then I'll toss the mic over to you there. So Mr. McCall, all I think you do is tell me when you want me to flip to another slide. So welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'm just going to give you a little brief rundown of where we are halfway-ish through the school year and what's to look forward through the rest of the year. So when I started in July, the program was very, was very basic. So it was myself and my site managers. So as the school year evolved, one of my goals was to get the program into a position where if we wanted to flip the switch and get state funding for our lower income families, we could go that route. And we also need to be in compliance with state guidelines. So the program has to follow a law of education policies and procedures that you pass year to year. But we're also bound to follow New Jersey childcare guidelines, even though we're a before and after school program. We are considered right now a licensing accepted program. So that is just the formality of you can adopt a care program through the state of New Jersey and not have to go through the hurdles that the state sends over to childcare programs. So this chart is our organizational chart that we have right now. So, um, I'm, there's me up on top. Our program supervisor who just joined us in July has really been a god to me. She filled her requirement of 181 to the 320 students. You have to have two program supervisors in your program. Because my office is in one of the elementary schools that checks off program supervisor requirements. So we don't need to add another one. Excitingly, our preschool program started in October, so our preschool site manager started. I'm really proud of the work they've done, they've done an amazing job with our preschool students. Underirded our service systems and then a new position to this school year was an administrative assistant for our site managers at each school location, two at Irving and one at Marlboro. I don't know if you've seen our site managers in action during the course of aftercare, they are very, very busy. They all did phenomenal job, but they definitely need some assistance getting some of that administrative work done, whether it be kids' reports, checking on students, so that's the role that was hired there. And we recently just started, which I'll jump into more a little bit, our enrichment specialists. So one of the challenges we'll take from the program in August was programming. I heard from parents that really, really want the program to come up in aftercare, but also make sure that we're fiscally responsible to sustain a program for years to come. Luckily, we are financially in really good shape right now, so the programming has and is going to significantly increase as we transition into the second half of the school year and next school year, but I'll jump into that a little bit more in some later slides. So our Marlboro School is our largest school. We have approximately 117 students per day, which is a lot of kids, it's a lot of kids. In comparison to some attendance sheets I was able to go through today. I went through about three months of attendance sheets, there was about 107 students on average last year, which is about a 9.34% increase. So I'm always looking to add more students, but 127 is a really healthy number. That is majority of aftercare students. There's only roughly 16 students registered for our aftercare over at Marlboro. Irving is our, obviously our second one. It's a little more unique where our, I found that Irving's school, the student attendance really fluctuates by day. Where Marlboro, the majority of our families are five days per week. Our Irving school students there are really ranging from two, three, and five days per week. Last year, there was an average of 21 students based on those attendance sheets. This year's 116. I know it looks large, it's a 36.5% increase, but we have to keep in mind that there was a significant number of preschool students that started this year, which is about 20 to 22 per day on average. So one of the systems that we put into place when I started was a childcare software called Easy Child Track. So we are bound by state ratios through the state of New Jersey. Our before and after school programs for K through five have to be at about 15 to one. I think 10 to one, 12 to one is a little bit more of a healthier number. Our preschool program has to be within around 10 to one. So don't be alarmed with that 74 that you're seeing up there, it's just because our online system unlocks at 2:00 PM. There are not 74 students there. Or it really starts around 2:45-ish. So they are really helping with the staff ratio, it's about 12 to one from the start and then seven as you move on. That's a good number, seven's good, but our little ones are very, very active, so one or two more employees there definitely would help. Hiring is a challenge this year. One of the things I was hoping would help and has helped a little bit was partner with the Rutgers Handshake Program. So the job postings are going right to Rutgers education students and Middlesex County also. Has partnered with us to post right to their students that are interested in taking education, childcare. So we've seen the applications come in and definitely higher quality applications. So I'm really proud of the work that our program supervisor put into that as well. Our Marlboro student ratio is within compliance, it is high. Honestly, when you interview people, they really want to work with the little ones, the preschool ones. The elementary gate is a little more difficult to get people to work for, but they are within ratio. Our Marlboro morning program is very small. We only have about 12 students registered on a given day, three or four of them show up, so it's quite small. Our aftercare program is quite large and we are looking to expand the staffing, which is on the agenda tonight. So happy word that's going. Marlboro is one of the areas where enrichment is needed. Our younger ones, their problems are small, because they're younger, but as they grow, the problems become a little better. And if the students are bored, that's where it's, it's gonna happen. So there's been an arts and crafts pilot program that we started there in the month of March, which was wildly successful. It was only open to 10 students because I just wanted to get a gauge on how it was. Again, it was really successful, so we were able to add staff. So it's not gonna be a pilot program, it's not going to be a draft for parents anymore. It's gonna be available to all families at Marlboro School in addition to a yoga program that's also gonna be starting in March as well. So this is kind of a little, this is a little repetitive, but let's do, since we started in September, there's a lot, and I have to give from Dr. Suska's office down to the site manager's a huge shout out. It takes a village to get the school year started and going and they have been phenomenal, so thank you all for your hard work. Our preschool site manager again is new and that's gonna be quite the challenger. I have a lot of work this summer with the additional preschool program. I'm anticipating we may have to add to that because of how tight the ratios are for preschool students. So that's some work we'll definitely get done in the summer. Our administrative assistants to help our site managers out with the hard work they do each day. And our enrichment specialists. One of the areas that definitely needed improvement when I started was the interviewing process. There, quite honestly, really wasn't one. So how we developed that was a two-pronged approach. So the site managers and the program supervisor meet with the successful applicant. Basically, this is done filtering through them. Once they complete their review of that, they'll come to me and then to the board for approval. Compliance is definitely one of the things that we need to continue to focus on. The Easy Track system, I think does a lot of that legwork, so the state does ask me what the ratios are, the attendance sheets. So when a parent comes, they're touching the iPad, that's a digital signature. So all of the ratios are recorded in our online system, should the state come and ask us if we really want to click the button, I can figure out this stuff for them. Staff training, which is a little difficult. So childcare employees are required to have X amount of professional development trainings throughout the school year. Obviously, being that our staff are mostly parent professionals coming directly from the school day to aftercare, that's a little bit of a challenge. So unfortunately, they have to come at 6:00 afterwards, we try to keep it pretty quick, but those are starting. The monthly meeting with the program leadership team, they do an amazing job. And then we sit there a couple times a month at night to go over. Now I want them to be able to come to me to comment on the issues they have and while we continue to develop the program, those monthly trainings count toward the professional development that they have. Additionally, the addition of the program supervisor, noticed a significant uptick in programming the last month since she started. And you'll see in future slides, there's a lot of programming to be scheduled for our students, which is really exciting. Then incident briefing reporting system. So one area of aftercare that's very unique is we are a district run program, but we're armed in a sense, we kind of reached, we're a separate entity kind of thing. One of the things that everybody does have to be on board with is if someone's, a student is struggling in aftercare, I want to make sure that they're getting the support that they need during the school day, because most of the times it comes hand in hand. Both school guidance counselors, psychologists have been amazing. And if there's any issue, the incident reports go to the site manager first, then they go to me. And if there needs any follow-up with the school psychologist or the school guidance counselors, they will go to them within 24 hours and they'll meet with whoever they need to meet with to make sure they get the services that they need. And then last one on here is staff evaluation. So it's, I guess, staff evaluations were never done previously, so we started that process. So the process, it can be quite difficult sometimes, especially if you've never received one to try to get the constructive criticism. But it's something that has to be done, it's a state requirement and really it should be a requirement for the program as well. So what you see here is a little tiny sample of the additional program incoming. So the Easy Track system can be utilized significantly more. One of those is a parent being able to just log on and see what their student's doing for the day, which I think is really important for parents to see. So this is just a very small glimpse of what's going to come up, what's going to be occurring in aftercare. So this type of calendar will be uploaded to the parent's Easy Child Track account. So should they want to log in, they, they see something cool going in on a Tuesday, maybe they don't attend on a Tuesday, they can call me, email me, send their student home that day and then we'll get them registered. It's only a $10 drop-in. My, my goal is to have this calendar go out to all families and then eventually they, they, you know, who was placed harder, then they want to send their kids on that day of the year. So that's the goal of programming. Again, it's a little, it was a little difficult for the first five months of the year that one speech of the program was in a place where we don't have to worry financially going into next school year. But I can confidently say that we've reached that place, so we can start upping the program, programming pretty significantly. What to look forward to for the end of the year for you. So similar to the budget you all have to do, we also have to do our annual budget. So that is coming up towards the end of the year. So how this success of aftercare will kind of be benchmarked. I had sent a program survey out to families in October of what did you like from the previous years? What are you liking, not liking from this school year? I went over that, those results with my leadership team and we drive the goals for the rest of the school year. How we want to see the points raised. So come June, when the next parent survey comes out, the benchmarks will be measured on that. I will be back in June to present those results over to you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Magatosh. Good recording, I saw it here. All right, I will open it up to the board if there's any pretty good questions for Mr. Magatosh.
Hey, can you give me, hopefully, my Ken? So for the beforecare for Marlboro, there's three students. I'm just wondering, because that is the one that is a little more administrative important. So do all five folks need to be there for the three students for care?
So there's two staff members. There only is a requirement for one, but I use two just because if there's one, something will happen and the staff member will have to leave the room and then you have the other kids and someone to deal with that.
Quick question about the Easy Child Track. Is that a website or do they have an app to parents?
Uh, it's a website, you can use the app, their app really isn't like the most user-friendly app, but it is an online website.
Okay, thank you.
And that's where our questions, well, that's, everything is centralized in there. So parent billing, parent payment, student informations are recorded in there forever as long as you want, and so it's all in one system.
Um, how are behavioral issues in the after school program, like reported in the track?
Sure, so they, right now, they go through an incident report form to the site manager. She'll kind of develop her plan based on how severe the incident is, if it gets to my office. By that time, it's mostly a conversation with school psychologist or a follow-up. But don't typically involve the building principals unless the situation's pretty severe. So right now, it's in a two-pronged approach. The site manager will handle it 90% of the time and then if that's necessary, I'll step in. One of the things that is a little different from the school day, if it's a repeated offense, then the conversation is with the parent, myself, and the site manager of, well, that means a little bit of a break from the program. Maybe the program's not the best fit. So it's kind of a unique, how each situation occurs.
And are you seeing a lot of behavioral issues, especially at Marlboro?
Yes, yes, we are.
Is there coordination with the school administration?
There is, I have a meeting with the school psychologist, her office is about three steps from mine and then Ms. Young is very active at the program as well. So to work in the school program, do they need a sub-license or one of the requirements? They do not, so there is on the position. So the parent professionals do not need a substitute license. The program supervisor needs at least a certifying certificate or X amount of years working in the childcare program. Because I was thinking, use handshake, it might come to, I teach an elementary program, so if you want elementary, you know, training, teachers are heading train. I'd be happy to send it out to them. They might get it through handshake, but it would probably be different from faculty member, that agree? The other thing we can do is we can send it out to those in the ed minor program who might be thinking about education and I don't think handshake might go to them. Yeah, that'd be great. So I'd be happy to send things out if, if you like that.
Sure, that's, that's great. I can coordinate that for you, Mr. Magatosh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Magatosh. And you're of course, one of the most famous speakers of the recent press, I'm sure you're a lovely to do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Magatosh's presentation will also be available in the board notes that will come out, hopefully tomorrow, if not by Wednesday, depending on when we get everything uploaded to YouTube and coordinate our efforts for the board notes. And that concludes my presentation tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Suska. So we're going to move right into committee reports, I'll begin with curriculum and instruction. On the agenda tonight, we have approval of two field trips. One for Robert to go to the science fair at high school and then a second for the CEOs to go on their boat meal, boat dinner, boat lunch, something like that. We now have our hit reports on our agendas, also listing whether they were confirmed or not confirmed. There was some feedback that they, like, you know, we know that there are hits, but how many are confirmed, how many aren't? So we are able to list that without breaching confidentiality. We also have the approval of the 2024-2025 district school calendar. It is a very complex and difficult process to create a district calendar. Requires a lot of different spoons in a pot, so to speak. So we're really grateful to Dr. Suska and to Keith Presty and everybody else who helped work on this calendar and entertained our many comments and feedback. We also have approval of the revised 2024 board meetings calendar. Take note that one of the meetings in March had to be moved. Um, I don't know why, it was just a scheduling conflict.
It was for the, for the budget, so we have a requirement of when we have to submit our budget stuff to the county for the state approval, so we had to move it up so we could be compliant.
Right, okay. Um, we also have the approval of some job descriptions for the after school program and also for special education instructional coaches. Uh, we have approval of university graduates, interns, practical students for music, yeah, at Marlboro School. Uh, we have approval for the Raptor Student Safe Early Intervention Program. This is going to be for training for teachers to assist them in identifying mental health in like, I guess, in the terms of poor mental health, so that they can assist in connecting students and families with the services. We also have the approval of the Hammond Park Middle School Music Clinic Series. The approval of participation in the teen arts program in New Jersey that's over at Middlesex. So we have eight students from the middle school and one student at the high school participating. We have approval of home instruction for two students. I'm now going to go over what we discussed in our committee meeting. We met on February 8th, it was myself, Ms. Rodriguez, Dan, Jen, and Sarah. We first discussed bullying prevention programming. We asked Ms. Rodriguez to provide information on curriculum and programs that are used to address bullying in schools. The principals sent over lists of bullying interventions to Michelle. This list did not include like actual curricula, so we did ask Michelle to circle back and update some information on curriculum that is used as opposed to different things and different events and strategies. So we do have that at Irving, they do respect and random acts of kind this week. They also have assemblies from LEED U. And then they also have counselors pushing in to do lessons on bullying prevention. We have at Marlboro, Mr. Ray assemblies in addition to LEED U assemblies. They have whole school language at logistical consequences around bullying and conflict. Peaks and valleys, and, so Peaks and Valleys is a mentoring club. They also have brothers mentoring, which is monthly. Um, oh, I'm sorry, that's not monthly. They also have monthly school meetings in which they talk about different social emotional competencies, skills and traits and things around bullying prevention. Uh, they also have ethic events, our SEL labs and our SEL lessons that push into the classroom. Middle school and high school have advisory periods now. They've mentioned a few times tonight and also in previous board meetings. They are structured lessons two times a month and they focus on SEL skills. They are structured lessons two times a month and they focus on SEL skills and team building. And then like I said, Ms. Rodriguez will follow up with schools to find out what specific programs or curricula they are using that has structured lessons or scope and sequence, which is a plan for how lessons unfold. All right, for student support, we started to talk about benchmark data, but we don't have a lot yet. So they were finishing up collecting all of the benchmark data at that meeting, so we are hoping to report more benchmark data at the next meeting. We discussed preliminarily, like, well, from math, edelastic, which is something that I've also mentioned in previous meetings, that is a program that interventionists at Bartle Middle School and High School are using to write basic skills assessments, quarterly assessments, and cumulative assessments. Good feedback came from the teachers. There is still a learning curve, so Miss Appa is working with edelastic to provide basic and for advanced PD when teachers are ready. Edelastic syncs with Genesis to run data reports, which makes it very easy for teachers to pull data reports and actually analyze how students are doing on their assessments, what skills might need more focus or differentiation. With open-ended questions on edelastic assessment, there still needs to be a bit of learning and practice. Teachers need more training on how to write, align, and assess open-ended questions in the program. Students are working on stamina with rigorous assessments and also learning how more complex questions are structured and graded, so they're able to kind of see the patterns within those questions and, you know, practice the skills. For ELA, they are using the math and Acadians assessments. Irving interventionists reviewed data and were able to exit some students out of intervention based on results. About three out of the nine kindergarteners were exited out of intervention and about two, 12 out of 33 first graders exited intervention. Interventions have also added kindergarteners and first graders based on the benchmark data. So the district is really trying to implement this cycling process where if a student is identified as needing intervention, they're not in intervention for the rest of the year. They are graduated out of intervention if they need a goal, and then students are entered into intervention if they're falling below standard. A consultant came into model foundations and worked with Michelle and the interventionists to spend time looking at data and identify students to be pulled for intervention or to receive intervention in class. Middle school also has types of students exiting intervention, and like the other schools, some were added, but we didn't have those specific numbers. Students who are in intervention for the full year will be recommended for summer intervention. We discussed barriers to the summer program attendance, including when it's scheduled kind of later in the spring, you know, after parents have signed their kids up for camp. So hopefully trying to address some of those issues through more active communication, earlier communication about students that may need to enter into intervention program in the summer. I lost my place, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. All right, we also discussed some other barriers, but you know, the program conflicts with camps, when there are half-days, you know, they are scheduled half-days, so then there's like, will do, if I pick my kid up, do I take them to another camp? It's also difficult to hire summer staff. So Ms. Rodriguez is working with summer program supervisors to brainstorm summer program improvements, but maybe limited with the structure based on how the program needs its specific interventions under the grant with which it's funded. For example, Michelle was thinking about structuring, which by the way, Michelle's in Rodriguez, I know it keeps switching between the two. She was thinking about structuring summer program differently to be more interest-based camps, that would have some kind of interest-based focus like dance, and then the academics would be woven in during the day, so the student would get excited about going to dance camp and wouldn't kind of be put off by having to attend reading or math camp. Some students do love this. This may encourage more students to attend, but this is a very early concept and she has to examine whether it would be the criteria of the grant that comes to summer program. We also have an Oregon-Gillingham training cohort this summer. This is also funded with grant money. There are going to be 30 slots available prioritizing special education teachers, Irving and Bartle teachers, and then general education and middle school teachers. The intention behind the OG tutoring is to bolster tier-two intervention during the day after school. The training will likely be 30 hours in four days. Staff in the building are OG supervisors, and they can coach others through the process. So with this program coming in, we do have systems in place for students, the participants to get continued coaching after they finish the summer training. And we have Acadians, is used as our universal screener for dyslexia. Basically, a student is referred for further intervention or a conversation is had with the family based on how many indicators a child hits on the Acadians assessment. Each level of indicators would equal a level of support. They are working to improve practice of identification and tiering support for students that are showing indicators of dyslexia. And that's all I have for my report. Are there any questions? And a suggestion, if your mic is wonky, maybe do the report from the podium, because I think they can hear it. Or you can come switch mics. What? I don't have any next reports, so anyways. Keep moving, it's all right. Next caller. We have not finished, so I'm asking, sorry. We're meeting, we'll be meeting next week. Okay? Finance and Facilities, I don't, we can't hear it, I guess. Ethan, can you hear it?
Can you hear me?
Yes? I think I got it. Okay, thank you. All right. I've got the finance and facilities report and the agenda. I'll do the reverse, you do my minutes first, and then do the agenda. We, Finance and Facilities have been very busy. We have three meetings just on budget this past month, and then one regular weekly. The three budget meetings, January 30th, we met with administrators from Irving, from the high school, and from central office, all our funding programs, humanities, wellness, and grant funding. They presented their budgets, their, we requested their budgets, and they've already been stuck with Christina and Denise, and they were reviewed by Finance Facilities members. We did the same thing on February 5th, and that was technology, ed services, and athletics, and administrators from those areas presented their budgets. And then on the 15th, we heard from middle school, Bartle, and Facilities, all looking at their budgets. The board members, I'm not sure about minutes, but the budgets have woven, I think we can share them in the board notes, they're all there to review, so if you have questions, you certainly should bring them forward. What we will be doing, obviously, more budgets are unfolding forward. Then on February 13th, we actually had the Finance and Facilities meeting meetings. We had a lot of quality time together. And in that, we did a column with his daycare updates, I'm not going to add anything more to that. We heard him tonight. There were some things in my notes related to salary and personnel that the board should be looking at. The bulk of our meeting on 13th, we had a presentation from Brown and Brown on their talent for you here tonight. It was an update on the marketing results for health insurance for the district. They was reviewing the process, the results were reviewed with Finance Facilities. That presentation also was shared in the board notes. The recommendation ultimately is to, was to accept Horizon's proposal. So what happens is that our, our district is marketed to different insurance providers, if I'm saying this right, feel free to correct me, but right. And they come back with, are they interested in insuring our district employees? If they, if they are interested, they present a proposal. They have to provide, they have to guarantee that benefits are equal or better than the current ones and have the exact same network of providers. Horizon's proposal was financially debased, they could guarantee all those things. It could potentially save the district a million dollars over 14 months. The rate, it would be guaranteed through July of 2025, the rate would be rolling into. That has since gone to association for their input, and that is on our agenda tonight, that proposal, to accept, to accept the recommendation for Horizon. We've also met, we did actually another meeting with Finance and Facilities, was we had interviews for architectural services. That was just on February 21st. We heard proposals from four, I'm sure I'm right, four architectural firms, one of them being DMR, that is our partner architect, and three others. There is a recommendation on the agenda tonight to, to keep DMR, to continue the projects they're working on now, but to add another architect, and we are recommending, the recommendation from that group was that we, that we approved Speesel, the firm Speesel, whole name, but it's on the agenda, to be an architect. Those lasted an interview, the reporters there had consensus that firm's presentation was the strongest and most likely to meet our needs. I personally liked that they had an emphasis on creating an master plan and then incorporating that with a long-range facilities plan. I sort of felt it was a, I think that's what we need, an ironically strategic plan, and it's exactly what came out of the facilities group. The other thing I liked about them was they had, they stated 91% success rate on the referendums they worked on in other districts. So that's in our future, then I feel like they have the experience in that as well. Then the other item on our agenda there was the agreement for share revenue, that was pilot program agreement, 31 number one, that's also attached to the board notes or minutes. And that would give us 50% of the pilot money, the payment rule taxes that Bartle is receiving, similar to what we get, what we generally profit tax. And that would be for the long-term of that 30-year agreement. The last thing that we discussed, which a big ongoing conversation was about the negative student lunch balance, it again had, it continues to increase. As of February 8th, there was a $46,000 negative balance in our student lunch balance. And that's even after additional free reduced lunch applications, I think 10 more were picked up on, but still that number keeps growing. It was one recommendation for next year that all students, all families have to complete the free reduced lunch form through Genesis, maybe that'll help us with a few more families. Beyond that, we don't have other suggestions as to what to do, how to deal with this type of negative lunch balance. The lunch program does make a profit, it's interesting, but that profit can't be used in this type of lunch balance. It is used instead for updating captured facilities and other issues that can be used to lunch balance. So that was, that's my report on minutes for our meeting, on any meetings. The agenda, also lengthy, sorry guys. We have, because our business administrator is doing so much work, she's getting those whole section approved, and we're very up to date, which is wonderful. There's a bill list that takes us right through February 26th. There is a preliminary report of the treasurer's school monies as of December 31st. We have a preliminary report, I think it's December, I don't read them, that they know what the timeline, either it's been overextended, and also that is all as of December 31st, and that no major fund or account has been overextended, and that sufficient funds are available to the district's financial obligations every year. So those are different certifications that are on our agenda. There's a bunch of transfers on here, approval of travel-related expense reimbursements, contractors for professional services, at least attached to the agenda, predominantly there is special, well, many different special vacations, speech and language, behavior analysts and technicians. I think these are firms that, as we need, that would be the places that I've been more improved, so we can go with consultants or certain, they're in the street organizations, speech therapy as well. And then there are some musicians for focus to add to our, to add to our students who are working on that, and a consultant to provide a presentation on alternative, alternative education and program certainly has with students, other professional development contracts, John Morello, the performance system to mental health and prevention of substance abuse, putting on shows at Mill High School in Long Beach Community. I'm in the hunger, middle school student reading assembly, and Madam Roy can provide some more with construction rates reading for in large today. We have approval of lie attitudes replacement, two students requiring bedside instruction, one had a difference, attitude student who needs additional related surveys. We have approval of a settlement agreement, so that's a 12 on our agenda, and that's related to a home instruction need, that's a legal agreement. Two out of district contracts from the Candy Mentos students, and those are students who are becoming displaced. We have some donations, thank you to James Colas, part of our safety community, and I can report on later. James Colas donated eight safety megaphones to be used during safety drills, so thank you to him. Tried them out, they were great for the safety community. And L.J. Smith has donated $6,700 worth of sports equipment for our teams. And yeah, and Len Currie, who's an employee, he's a professional, he's donating $3,000 to our both programs at high school. So we definitely thank everybody for those donations. So there's a lot of, there's good news on this, on this tier, also additional funding for our school antu services. It's our program for providing mental health services for our students, which wasn't a chopping block. Dr. Siska and others worked very hard to bring it back and keep it, and now they've increased our funding, so I'll figure, but that's right, we need it. Oh, there was a need for a public address system, replacements are upgrades Irving, and so that's on here, that was a really critical security need, so that's number 1819 to improve that work. And then some salaries have been moved, nothing changes here, they're the line items, so they can be paid for by, that they can be paid for by federal grants, so there's a list of salaries that are maybe adjusted, we've paid and developed here. And then there was the approval of architectural services, number 21, and that is, as I said, DMR and Spargo Architects, and that's on there as well. Also on here is approval of a health benefits group, character selection, to terminate school employees' health benefits program, to take on Horizon, who possibly should pepper our staff. And that's, if there's any other needs, any questions? What did you think? Okay, we can move it. Personnel?
Do you want to? Okay. Here, we pass one down.
So for personnel communication, we met on February 6th. We met over mostly with personnel agenda items, and then I'll add some info after we have written agenda on the high school principal search. So on the agenda, we have approval of leaves, approval of leave extension, acceptance of two retirements, Ms. Law and Ms. Strut. Love it, thank you both so much for your service. Acceptance of three resignations. Paraprofessional at Irving, family school liaison and advisor to keep up at the high school. Approval of four new hires. Family school liaison at the middle school, special ed teacher at Irving. Accounts payable purchasing at the business office and apartment accounts at our portal. Approval of extra compensation for paraprofessional at Irving. Approval of scheduled positions for middle school softball. Two new coaches from our community. Approval of paraprofessionals for extra duties and after school band, orchestra and chorus. Approval of before and after school staff at Barle. Two enrichment specialists and two student aides. Approval of swim competition chaperone, retro chaperone changed for the GNC swimming event. Approval of professional development, radical classroom, creating a safe space for LGTBI A+ students. Using Teachtown in classroom, two of those incorporating theme strategies into curriculum and two sessions for creating the camp out. Approval of evening preschool registration assistance at Irving for three employees, four, five employees. Approval of Title I after school SBL yoga and art coordinator. Approval of staff for family night at Irving and Barle. Approval of independent study program teachers for virtual sports and entertainment management. Approval of math, science after school program, doctor, doctors, there are two of those at Barle. Approval of changes for the staff for five hours for in-service day. Our responsive classroom in special areas, two people there. Approval of pip musician for the musical focus. Approval of counselors for Title I family engagement night. College application, facts that completion, parent family workshop night. And incoming freshman parent program times three. And that is it for the agenda. So then the update on the high school principal search from our community. We received 61 applicants, oh no, sorry, 61 responses to the survey that we sent out, 49% of those were parent guardians, 28% staff and 23% were high school students, that cover all grades. Following with the top responses to the question. These select five characteristics from below that you believe are important for the new principal to possess. The top five were, they are fair, consistent and respectful of all people regardless of the situation. Strong interpersonal skills, i.e. awesome people skills and communication skills, both written and verbal. Classroom teaching experience, preferably on high school level. The ability to maintain an effective learning climate in the school and experience as a principal. And the top three responses to the question. When considering leadership characteristics and qualities that you believe are important for the new principal to possess, please select three from the list below. Were passionate about education outcomes and student well-being. Effective communicator and promotes accountability at all levels. There were a total of 29 applicants and nine of them were selected for the first round interviews based on their certifications and the survey results. Yeah, just wanted to add one more thing about Ms. Law. She is responsible for helping plan almost every outside activity at the middle school. So we are very sorry to see her go and hopefully, you know, somebody else will, will be there for us. Including like ice cream socials, movie nights, everything, she's been wonderful, so thank you so much, Ms. Law. Is everyone here, I'm sure she's awesome. She's awesome. That concludes my report, any questions?
Policy. Okay, mine is short, we actually did meet. And on one, on one policy only, and I just thought you had the first read, it's related to schools, policy 2270. Discussing briefly last one, knowing that it was coming. We, you know, had, we wanted to revise the policy a bit, but we went to lawyers to ask. And in fact, it is based on law and it's based on U.S. D O E guidance. So our lawyers encouraged us not to make changes to it. So it is, we made one small change. We linked the U.S. D O E guidance to the policy, so if you click on it, open it and read it. And we added one sentence which came from the guidelines, put it into the policy. Which would say that, where do we, it was related to the context related to prayer. So maybe I'll repeat the sentence. The following activities as outlined in the U.S. D O guideline can be permitted upon applying governing constitutional principles, in particular public school contexts related to prayer, to the same degree that they may engage in non-religious private expression during such time. Having concluded against the list from the original policy, prayer moves exercise for non-structural time, organized prayer groups and activities, go into silence, accommodation of prayer location or session size or instructional time, student assemblies and offer for beds and prayer regulation and the back to glory ceremonies. So that is up for per read, if there are any questions or comments on it, that's on the back of the policy.
Thank you. We're going to proceed for public comments. I apologize, this was not one of those meetings where you could move public comment up in the meeting because we have to present all the workshop items before we vote. So thank you for your patience. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and access at this time to your comments. Forward policy is number 0164 and number 0167. Establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Each speaker will have a three minute limit. And we will be conducting hopefully for 30 minutes.
Hi, Abby's turn right now, I live on Parker Street, and a few things to say as usual.
Just make sure you're really talking into the mic.
Sure. As usual, kind of scattered, scattered thoughts based on some of the things that were recorded. I'll start by saying, please change the Barle start times, I'm not going to get into it because I think there's other people that will speak about it, but I wanted to start by saying that you've all heard from me many times about this and we need to make action on this. Couple of other comments with regard to public participation. I wanted to just note that from what I've heard, there's 50 to 60 people online. I don't know all of them, but I can imagine that there's a lot of things that are, you know, coming up. But Startex are a big part of that, there's many people in person as well. I know you said you can't move up the public comment, but if there are other meetings, if you can, people are leaving. People, you know, people cannot say this is bedtime, this is really not conducive to public engagement. I understand that was not intentional, but gotta take that into consideration. I also would just like to say in the comment that I think you need to invest in better microphones. I know you're all trying really hard, but at this point, it's kind of ridiculous. We've been over there so many times, I don't know where, you know, the money comes from that. But the microphone situation needs to be fixed, we've all mentioned it a bunch of times. One thing I want to talk about is the after school program. There was a presentation tonight, I've spoken to Colin multiple times. And Colin stated tonight that this is a program that has to adhere to state childcare regulation requirements. That has to do with ratios, which Colin's made great progress on, and there's a lot of great progress there. But that also has to do with programming. I understand from what I've heard and totally began to hear that Barle has some issues. But Irving, I believe, needs more attention. The pre-k kids, I'm really concerned. And again, this is not something I haven't said to Colin, I hope he understands, but I need to all of you to hear this as well. The pre-k kids are the easy guys, you know, they're not fighting, they're not, hopefully, they kicked out having issues. But they cannot be sitting in front of screens the whole time. They cannot have screens even in the background the whole time while they're eating snack, while they're, you know, even read along, all of these things are being done with screens. I spoke to Colin and he said that parents want this. I like to see data that show that, first of all, every parent I've spoken to is absolutely appalled. Regardless of what parents want, there are guidelines that say that screen time has to be limited. It cannot be passive. I looked this up right here, when Colin said that we have to follow New Jersey childcare guidelines. It is right there. We cannot be relying on screens, these kids are there for hours. They are there until 6:00 PM from 2:40. That is ridiculous to have.
Abby, we should wrap it up.
Thank you. I, I'm feeling heated, so I'll leave it at that. But I, these kids are being purged out because we have bigger issues, but they matter too. These pre-k kids are really little and they still tell us what's going on, but they also need active engagement from the adults in the room, and that screen's being on all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another public commenter from the room?
I'm Andrea Alexandra, 116 North Berry Avenue. And I'm here tonight to ask the board one more time, I agree with Ms. Law, please change the start time at Barle. I'm hoping that you can do it in time to help the children for next year. You know, I was really disappointed to see the letter that went out in the superintendent's report saying that the start times need to be changed because ever since this came out last year, we were told it'll be recessed, we'll review, and then all of a sudden, that option was taken off the table. You know, we were told, we'll see how it goes. Well, I think the son of her was at our house, which is most mornings, my son, who's in second grade, wakes up crying and saying he doesn't want to go to school because he's really tired. I was at the strategic plan meeting last week and I was sitting with one of the district administrators. And she said, we need to make learning fun again, we need to get our kids excited about going to school. And one thing that's completely harming my kids and making them less excited about going to school is the fact that it starts so early. So I'm really hoping that we can address this. And I know it's clearly a problem that nobody recognizes because there's signs over calendar saying, be present, be proud, get to Barle, you know, attend Barle, get to Barle on time. So for acknowledging there's an issue, it seems like the most obvious solution is to fix the start time. I know it's a challenge, I know, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces, but I'm just hoping that we can be creative and find a solution. We're letting our high school kids this year get to sleep, they need to succeed and that is wonderful. And I'm hoping that we can do the same for the kids at Barle.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to come back and say.
Well, Abby, I'm sorry, this is, we will have a second public comment period after we go over our action items.
I understand, I understand, but somebody just turned their camera on, associated with someone sitting up here and gave me a thumbs down.
Abby, this is not, this is not appropriate. Hi, it's India Oria, for somebody who gives me a thumbs down, who is associated with someone sitting up here. Send me the India email, please.
Thank you.
Hello, is that, I'm Rob Scott. I live at 25 South Second Avenue, I'm a longtime resident of Highland Park. Two of my children are graduates of Highland Park, I've got another one who's a junior. And so the reason I'm here today is, a little while ago, I got a text from my son that I needed to do a survey, so you can see his report. So I got on, but what is this survey? This important survey. So I log on to take the survey and it was surveyed about the start timers. And there's been a long running problem with the start times at schools. In particular, to the start times for the high school students were moved a little bit later. But that was done at the expense of moving the start time to 7:45 for Barle School. Now, even though my youngest is now an 11th grader, I remember the Barle days, I remember the early days, right? And that's really early and it would have been a disaster for me back then. So I took the survey, it was a three question survey. Question one asked me basically if the survey benefited my family or not. And that kind of wrote me the wrong way, right? Because I live in a community, Highland Park is a great community. We have people here on board who volunteer their time. The school has treated my family well, right? But part of that is, we care about our neighbors too. So it doesn't just matter to me whether the change benefited my family, right? And so I thought, okay. Question two, this is the free response where I can say what I think, right? It was character limited, I really couldn't say anything at all, right? And I was really frustrated. And then I started talking to some people and I found out that this was the long promised survey to collect the data that we needed to know to consider any changes, tweaks, amendments, to do some kinds of problem solving. And what I see is a survey that was hung in that was maybe not like malicious, but kind of incompetent, like the reports on violence didn't get through, right? Really frustrating. So what I'm here today to do is to ask the members of the board specifically, because they're the people we elected, right? The residents of Highland Park, the taxpayers, to tell the superintendent, to tell Dr. Sista, to bring options, right? What can we do to make it so that every single school starts at a reasonable time? So that every single child in our community can get enough sleep, right? So that we live in a more just, equitable, fair community, which is what this community can be, right? That's what I'm asking. And I know it's hard, right? But I've seen hard times before and I can attest. Other districts do it late and if you put everything on the table, I think there can be a solution. So that's what I would ask the board to do and do that for that community. And if anyone wants a sticker, I've got more stickers. And thank you to the student, uh, uh, thank you for the sticker up here, I appreciate it.
Okay, is there another speaker in the room?
I just ask anybody that's speaking, please smile if she sees what I put on her name.
All right, no ideas, students.
Hello, my name is Luca Scott, I'm an 11th grader at Highland Park High School. I'm here today with my friends to stand in solidarity with the Barle School students. Their target is up 30% more. Today, me and my friends stood at the school and handed out 225 stickers and 260 flyers. And we handed them out throughout the school day. We ask that the board comes up with a plan so that everybody at Highland Park's start time that is after eight. Thank you.
Next speaker in the room?
Sorry, I have a long meeting. My name is Fire Maria Zacalaclos, 7315, I know this street floor one. The first thing that I want to ask, but it's not really about asking, is why in the world did that change with the Barle time even happen? I mean, if there was a logic behind it, I guess I would want to know what that is. But as a single mom, I've been forced because of needing to work a lot, to bring my son to be for care. And I'm going to tell you, it's not fun. And it's really a lot for the kids. And for parents that don't have to do that and the kids don't have to suffer that, it's not fair. And I, for me, I was like, great, this works for my job, perfect. But then it's like 2:15 PM, it's such a ridiculous time to be like cutting out your day. I can't work enough because of that time. And which goes into the after school thing, that's probably why we have a lot of after school kids in Barle. For me, my son is, has been complaining a lot about bullying in the after school, which I addressed with Mr. Collin as well. So now I'm stuck, I can't bring my son to after care because he's crying. He's crying because he want, he can't go in the morning. I've like tried really hard to bring my son on time and I'm still shocked that he has so many times that he's late. Even though I'm like, I'm certain I've gotten him there on time. That needs to change. And then the other thing that I wanted to address was, so I know that's probably broken your record for everyone, but I mean, even if it's just like 8:00 AM to 8:15 AM, which is still pretty early, still gets parents back to the work at 9:00 AM, but it's just a little bit better for the kids to sleep in and have that, just a little bit more. Even if that has to be like arranged because of all the schools and parents traveling their kids from one school to another, I get that. But then my other concern was generally with what's going on with, I would like to see something, and neither is, because I've been really busy, but something on the website regarding like the hip and how we can have access, for example, not just to after care, but like how things are being addressed when there are issues and like a more transparent way to understand what's happening with, with those interventions. I was glad to hear the list of things that are going on with historic justice. I think that was more in high school, but just having a more transparent way to understand how issues of bullying are being handled so that we can kind of be able to gauge where the progress is with that. Because a lot of times I'll get like kind of anecdotal results or like an email, oh, that was handled. But I'm not really feeling like, I feel like my son now feels safe to go to school. So those are the main suggestions that I wanted. So those are the main suggestions that I wanted to say. And also that I would love to offer for the after-care, a spring dance program at times.
Okay. Okay. Another speaker from the room?
Hi. I probably already know I'm here to talk about the Bardell start time. I know that...
Name and address?
Oh, Rebecca Murch, 331 Pelton Avenue. I, you already know that hundreds of community members have spoken out for over a year about this subject. Bardell kids are already at a big disadvantage due to the COVID years. They deserve the best learning environment we can give them, and that includes letting them sleep enough. These kids are not little babies. They're not, you know, they're not four or five years old. You can't just make them go to bed at 7:00. Nighttime lives, they have extracurriculars that go late. There is, targets are way up this year. The extra targets not only affect the late kids, but also the entire classroom. It gets disrupted when late kids come into the classroom. Even for kids who are on time, they are tired, they have trouble focusing. It's not, it's not a good learning environment for these kids that are already disadvantaged. A lot of these kids are in the building from 7:30 in the morning until 6:00 at night, which is a punishingly long day. We already know these things, because people have been saying it over and over for over a year. But I want to talk a little bit about the process the district has used to get to this point. It's not a process that we should be proud of as a district, and we should not seek to duplicate this process when it comes to any big decisions in this district. It's been marked by deflections, misleading statements, moving the goalposts, and an inadequate and at times non-existent stakeholder engagement. When the district began in spring of 2022, engaging the public on making the start, changing the start times, the only discussion was the high school and middle school and trying to make them later, which is a lot of goal. We all support that. But nobody ever talked about maybe Bardell go earlier. The Highland Park Board of Health has asked to advise on start times and endorse the district proposal, which the Board of Health did, but they were not asked, they were not given complete information. They were not asked about Bardell starting earlier and their support, which means represented, because their endorsement did not include support of earlier start times in Bardell. In May of 2022, a survey was sent out to district families, only sent to the middle and middle school students. Bardell and Irving families were never surveyed or even informed. Survey results remain public only after an open request for the survey's public release. The district later stated that it was going to ignore the survey results, which did not universally support later start times anyway. After deciding that their own survey was poorly designed, in the fall of 2022, the district created a task force to discuss start times. The task force was not public. It met in private. No parents were informed or invited to participate. There was no mention in public of Bardell and Irving starting earlier in any of the public discussions. In January 2023, this major policy change was announced in an email from the...
For F and X in three minutes.
Okay. I'll just finish this sentence. On Thursday, the Thursday email said that the new start times would be voted on in the upcoming Monday for me and... That was the first time anybody heard of this.
Rainstorm, 331 Pelton Avenue. We anticipated that we were overshot and picked up blood, where she left off. So soon after, as soon as the, notice was first given, three days before the vote at Bardell School, times were going to be raised. Community opposition immediately started to solidify. By the time people started to make their opinions known, they were told it was already too late to adopt this decision. Now, I want to point out, the reason you do public process is not just to check clocks. It's to vet big changes, and talk to the community, and get feedback. Like, for example, oh, by the way, the kids at Bardell have evening events. If you count the number of hours in your day, there aren't enough for them to do all the evening events, do their homework, have dinner, forget about socializing with the rest of the family before they have to go to bed and get up in the morning. Now, if they had the public process and actually talked about raising the Bardell start time, you would have gotten this kind of feedback. But that wasn't talked about until three days before the actual vote. I think the vote was holdwise. It was already too late to compact the decision. As soon as people realized what was going on and started to raise opposition, the BOE administration made a number of contradictory, unsupported claims, and repeatedly moved the goalposts and shifted the reasons for why the start times couldn't be changed. The district publicly said they had to work backwards from 3:00 PM. That couldn't be changed. No explanation for why that was the case was ever given. Even if it was too difficult to adjust the schedules for September 2023, we were assured that you could look to adjust the start times for September 2024. Then we were told that you should examine tardy data in the fall to determine how the policy was doing. And if it showed that the earlier start time increased tardies, they adjusted times accordingly for 2024. Well, that's not happening. Other contradictory reasons were cited within the policy. In a number of one-on-one meetings concerning community members, representatives suggested that courtesy busing could be eliminated, which is one of the holdups, if walkway improvements were made at Johnson Park, which will allow for a better walk to school. And in other one-on-one conversations with community members, the administration said the opposite. In the fall of 2023, hundreds of community members signed on to a letter asking the district to change the start times for September 24. Parents called for tardy data from the district. It wasn't initially forthcoming. It persisted, and the increase in tardies this year became very clear. And parents compiled data into a spreadsheet to share with the district, and again wrote letters protesting the Bardell start time, given the new data. In response to the district data, increased community protests, the board administration changed the goalposts and said that they're no longer interested in base decisions on tardy data. And then families were instead told that nothing would be decided until a new parent survey was released by the central leadership team in the spring. Families were told that only after that survey was conducted would the BOE consider a change in start times. We're calling the previous, I'll be done in just a second. We're calling the previous failed survey design. Community members asked to see the survey questions and have input. They were denied. Does someone else want to volunteer to pick up the letter? Anyone?
We do have some speakers online that have been waiting patiently to also address the board.
Okay, well, I'm just going to sum up and say, there's been no real discussion of this before the decision was made, a major decision. And then since it's been public, all the feedback has been negative and to change it. So I urge you to actually change it, and I would say, giving us an answer that it's too late again to change it because of the survey or because you didn't move it quick enough is not sufficient, seriously. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in person? Okay, we're going to extend public comment for 10 minutes in order to address the people that are waiting online. Laura?
I'm sorry, Laura Bolak, 148 Duke Close Lane. I'm speaking in support of the effort to reconsider the start times for Bardell students. I ask that the board members and superintendent please listen to our concerns and find a solution that works for the community. We live on Duke Close Lane, which is 1.1 miles from Bardell, which is a 25-minute walk for an adult, a 40-minute walk for my six-year-old. We do not own a car, and we are not eligible for busing. This means that we will have to leave our house by 7:05 in the morning in order to arrive at Bardell by 7:45. The triangle section of town does not have sidewalks on most streets, and I am not comfortable with my son walking to school in the dark before the sun rises with no sidewalks. Sleep has been shown in numerous, additionally, sleep has been shown in numerous scientific studies to be the most important factor in a child's healthy development. Here are three examples I found on PubMed demonstrating this. Article one, give children and adolescents the gift of a good night's sleep, a call to action. Sleep is the primary activity of the brain during early development. Short sleep and poor quality sleep impact every aspect of children's and adolescent's well-being and daytime functioning, ranging from decreased cognitive functioning to poor academic performance, decreased emotional regulation, and increased behavioral problems and psychopathology. Article two, sleep in children's physiology and an update of a literature review. Sleep is an active and psychophysiological process that has a critical impact on health. Its functions are numerous: growth, development, learning, memory, regulation of behavior, emotion, and immune strengthening. And article number three, a good night's sleep for a healthier population. Quote from this article, "A growing body of evidence shows that sleep loss is associated with mental distress, depression, anxiety, obesity, hypertension, diabetes, high cholesterol levels, premature death, and adverse health behaviors such as cigarette smoking, physical activity, sorry, physical inactivity, and heavy drinking. Thus, sleep loss is an under-recognized public health problem that has cumulative effects on physical and mental health." I ask the board again and the superintendent to please listen to this community whom you are here and you are supposed to be representing. Please help our sleeping kids. No school in Highland Park should start before 8:10 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Stern Cardnell? If you could please put your, sorry, if you could please put your name in Zoom?
Oh, yeah, it's, sorry, yeah.
No, yours is not, I should say generally, because I don't know who this whole one, like, next.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's Dan Stern, I'll change your address, please. Dan Stern Cardnell, 221 Harper Street. I was going to speak on something else, but Dr. Siska, I just have a few quick questions for you. I know I only have a few minutes here, so I appreciate yes or no, if at all possible.
I'm sorry, but public comment is for public comment. Ms. Dr. Siska will reply to your questions as a follow-up.
Yeah, okay, well, my, well, I guess my first question is, are you worried that your boyfriend attends these Zoom meetings and gestures to people when he disagrees with...
Mr. Stern Cardnell, I am going to have to stop you from commenting. This will be a personnel matter that will be handled. Please email us at the board and use appropriate chain of commands in order to deal with this issue.
Is, is...
You will limit our ability to deal with this issue if you continue. Did you want to comment on something else?
I, I would like to comment on something, district business that is related, but it's, it's about emails to the district, specifically emails to the Board of Ed and the administration. May I ask that question?
Yes.
So if I was to email the Board of Education and the administration, would that email be shared with anybody not on the BOE or administration?
In order to email, role of the Board of Education, you have to put both the Board of Education's individual email addresses.
Right, what I'm asking is, would that email be shared with anybody not affiliated with the district professionally?
No. I'm going to move to our next public commenter. Ms. Anello?
I do have an additional question, and I don't believe my...
We have, I believe we have hit our three minutes, Mr. Cardnell. I am sorry, there will be a second public comment period coming up after our action items.
I'll be back. I can hit a timer to 1:50 right now.
Ms. Anello?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to share my concerns with the early start time at Bardell. I know a lot of planning goes into the decision of the timing for each school day, but the increase in tardiness in each month of the year after which this was adopted, the increase of at least 30% over the year before, I just, I think speaks for itself. And I just urge the board to consider the fact that it's seeming, it's seemingly not possible for kids even at this younger age, these younger ages, to be getting enough sleep and getting to school in time for a 7:45 start. So I just urge the board and the district to reconsider this issue, to have a more robust public process where there's an opportunity for meaningful input from parents and residents, and to ensure that no school is starting before 8:10 in the morning. Thank you.
Ms. Wildreber?
Hi, I'm Buffy, full name Elizabeth Wildreber. I live at 16 North Seventh Avenue in Highland Park. I just wanted to add to what everyone else has said about the Bardell start times. I should say this will not affect, any change for the better will not affect my childhood. It's really important to me to speak out. This is this last year in Bardell. We have been late probably every day this year. And it's not for lack of trying, not for lack of concern about being on time. But I would just ask that the district really correct this mistake and make it so no school in the district, I mean, definitely doesn't start before 8:10. Personally, the advertisement started before 8:30, but 7:45 is just way, way too early for the Bardell School kids. Again, this doesn't even affect my, this won't even affect my child, but I don't want the kids who are still at Bardell or going to Bardell to have to deal with such an early start time that causes so much stress for their, for them and their families. The second piece, and I had emailed the board and the administration about this, is I'm asking the board to please look at the issue of paraprofessional pay in the district. My understanding is that it's at minimum wage or just above minimum wage for pares who work in the district during the school day and/or at the after-school program. And on that, also to restore the pay for Ms. Carla and Ms. Jackie, their pay was cut. This board, no, not this exact makeup of the board, but the board voted to approve a pay cut for them. I believe in, I believe in September, I might have it wrong. Since then, there's actually been, someone has been hired who has no supervisory experience at a much higher pay rate than they are at, which is pretty insulting, and I don't really think in line with our values as a district. So this is something that the board can really make right. We should, no one who works in our district should be, you know, living in poverty. And we really show, deserve, Ms. Carla and Ms. Jackie practically raised many of our kids, and we really should be showing them a lot of respect. And a pay cut is so district hopeful to both of them and totally undeserved. So I'd ask that the board really try to make, really try to make that right. And, thank you.
Ms. Patterson? And then Ms. Luthy, and then we are going to be stopping public comment, go over our action items, I have a president's report, and we'll continue to get back to public comment.
Yes, hi, Megan Patterson, 63, Moore Select Drive. I have a second grader at Bardell, and I'm also a working parent, so he is also in the after-school care. Was there earlier today, I needed to get home to be with my kids, but from what I understand from the report, it's 117 after-school kids at Bardell, so Bardell has the most after-school kids. I think my concern is with the earlier time. Yeah, so with the earlier start time, that also means an earlier dismissal time. So if someone is picking up their kid at 6:00, that's around 10 hours in the school itself and three and a half hours in the after-care. And, you know, my son gets home completely exhausted, also just from socializing for that amount of time. And so I also support a later time start, at least 8:10. I, again, also would agree with 8:30 is more ideal. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shand?
Hi, everyone. I will, I will stick to my three minutes, so I know everyone's eager to go home at this point. But I will make the start time. My daughter is in kindergarten. I don't need to hash that out again, but I absolutely can make it as well. We wake up at 7:15, so, and that's across the family. So my other piece is just the after-school program at Irving. I've emailed common a couple of times to get an understanding of what exactly programs are occurring for the children, to understand what they're doing. I have not had a response back. Unfortunately, I've taken my daughter out of five days of after-care because she does not enjoy it. So there's nothing going on, there's nothing to do. So I'm just a little bit frustrated with the program. I know he did have a sample up of the Bardell after-school program calendar, but there was no sample of what's happening at Irving and, you know, we're at March. was no sample of what's happening at Irving and, um, you know, we're at March, and we still don't have, we're basically at the end of the school and at the school year and a few months, so, um, just really wanna re-vamp up this. We're paying extra money for the after-school program this year, and I'd really just love to get this beat up a bit.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, we are going to move into right, uh, move right into our action items. I'll start with curriculum instruction. For curriculum instruction, I'd like to move items numbers one through 10. Second. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Salda?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Um, by facilities, um, I, uh, move that we approve items one through, all right, to those, one through 22.
Seven.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Salda?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr.? Is it again?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
For personnel and communication, I'd like to move items one through 19.
Second. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Salda?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Yes. Policy, uh, policy. I move, uh, item number one. Right.
Second. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Salda?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardeman?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we move on to board liaison reports. Does anyone have something to report from their committees or commissions?
Real quick, we haven't actually met yet, I'm, I'm a new liaison to the HP Athletic Boosters, I just wanted to mention that they have, um, their bingo night coming up, and if anybody hasn't got a ticket yet, I'm not sure if it's sold out, and they also have a raffle for MacBook Air, so check it out, it's posted all over email and Facebook.
Great, thank you. Um, also, the HPS meeting tomorrow, so look over grant proposals.
Are you going to send them?
All right, you missed that, so, um, we should have some news about our grants next month. All right, for our press room report, last Wednesday, we held our final strategic planning workshop. Uh, this was a really great process, uh, at our first two meetings, we had over 60 participants, and then our, our final meeting, we had, I think, over 30, possibly close to 40 participants. Um, thank you to all of the community members, parents, students, staff, and the board who attended our, um, our workshops with Patty Greif, and, uh, thank you to Patty for her assistance in facilitating the process. Participants met in groups to construct goals around areas of need in facilities, student achievement, connecting resources, and improving communication, and culture and climate. Uh, but a week forward, goals that they came up with. Number one for facilities is to create a long-term plan that addresses the safety and accessibility of district facilities that utilizes an innovative approach and reflects community needs. For connecting resources and improving communication is to connect families to schools by strengthening the coordination and accessibility of communications. For culture and climate is to be a leader in providing a safe, inclusive, and identity-affirming and supportive environment, and an inclusive education that uses diversity as its strength. And for student achievement, to increase academic rigor, excite and challenge students to learn in order to reach their individual potential. Dr. Siska and her team will work to create an action plan to achieve these goals, and will work to continue having community feedback be a part of that process. On another note, I know that many of you are here tonight because you are concerned about Bardo's start times. Since September, several board members have been working with Dr. Siska and the central leadership team to examine the impact of the change in start times. Board members have also continued to relay feedback and pose questions regarding other solutions, such as shared contracts with us routes, or creating safer walking paths to schools to allow for restructuring of busing. Whatever the solution is, it will be best found in collaboration with Dr. Siska, district leadership, and staff. This is an ongoing process, and we have remained and will continue to remain committed to honoring what we said last year, that we would examine the impact closely, look for opportunities to support families of this change, and examine long-term solutions that work for the district as a whole. Dr. Siska is working to move up the date of our next CLT meeting so we are able to more quickly review the final round of survey data and related concerns and questions presented this evening and to determine next steps. Uh, one more thing, uh, we have noticed an increase in unprofessional behavior in the Zoom option. We will be switching to a webinar format moving forward. So at our next meeting, the, uh, this will look much different, it's going to look like the meetings, if you've ever gone to the council meetings on Zoom, where you see the dais, you don't see everybody who's in the mean meeting tiled around. This option will also prevent people from interacting with other people during the meeting online. It will also take more accurate, um, collection of names as people enter, because people will have to put in a valid email address in order to attend the meeting. Uh, we're going to try it out, please bear with us, we're hoping it solves a lot of our audio problems, and also, um, eliminates the distractions online. Thank you. Oh, I still have to talk to you. Home business.
All right, I have a quick answer for my question, and I know it's really late, um, important for everyone to speak, but I did attend, um, safety committee meeting on February 7th, which, um, is not directly tied to any of our, our board committees, it's a school-wide committee, a district-wide committee, um, but an important one. Couple topics that were covered was, uh, the expanding the use of 911 inform. Um, currently, it's been used as a pilot, in order to expand it, we would need, we would need to have teachers, all staff have them with phones. It could be used for emergency events such as the, um, evacuation that was required last month. Um, so we're gonna look at, at our board policy and, um, and how we can roll out the extension of the 911 forms. It'll set a really good system to up our communication between staff during emergencies. Um, other updates, walkie-talkies, um, have been programmed in our use. Um, Bardo was looking for, um, added stop signs, it's issued in front of Bardo with cars driving by during dismissal time. Um, signs that came in were not so great, they're too heavy, whatever, but we're, um, they're gonna be used or ordered small, and while John's working on a better system for the front of Bardo with, um, stop signs, but obviously with the public, to be careful there, there's a lot of students and staff and parents crossing over a small area in front of Bardo. There are ta- uh, panic button, buttons that we tested in old schools, in the high schools, the last one to do on that. Um, we had a conversation about, um, birth training for our threat assessment teams and that plan, um, plan for that. Uh, we got those megaphones from Jeff Polis, uh, we thank him, and other conversations about how we do a better job of the reunification job. How we plan for reunification after evacuation, and they, um, and some different items were shared that might work well for that, uh, moving forward. Um, other topics, the visitor management system was discussed, and seems to be mostly effective, there was some conversation about needing better security during after-school programs, after-school hours, especially in high school. So that was the safety committee. One more thing I wanted to add? No, I just wanted to, uh, I would want to echo what, um, what Allison said, professional name. What Allison said related to, um, strategic planning, I thought it went really, really well, I, I appreciate that, I think it was a good process, but the board approved last year. It was three meetings to get to the result, and it was pretty impressive. Um, there was a good turnout, we would have loved to have been more diverse in Harts, but we had 60 community members at those meetings, and I think the strategic goals at the end are something that administration really, um, can work with and really, uh, come up with, uh, good action plans. It's so much what we talked about tonight, what we talked about all along, is in that. Um, and the same thing is true with collaborative besting of the calendar, with our calendar, all the work we put into it really reflects a consensus of people's wants and needs next year, so, I think that's great.
Just add to that, we've got the strategic plan, thank you, Carol. Um, and I'll admit, I didn't, I did it some last meeting, I do think the lack of full representation, or fuller representation of our community is not, in my view, um, a concern in that process. So I'm just thinking, I think this board is just, we need to think about ways to kind of compensate that more, just, yes, we have this place in place, and clearly, the people did come, their, their perspectives, and, um, I think the collaborative approach to meetings are very effective, and we did yield some really important decisions and ideas. Like, I don't know if this can be even SBA sort of, um, support mechanism, ask part of this process, but how is now make sure that we are, as we carry this strategic plan out, make sure during the process, we are willing for people to enter the process, so that it's not just this one time period that's particular.
I agree. Ethan?
Sure, thank you, um, that's what I do, uh, return to the, um, SSDS presentation with a few clarification questions. Uh, one suggestion, if this data is to be part of the record reporting, as I think it probably should be, um, if you, uh, Dr. Siska, if you're gonna post the data from previous quarters, and also backing up to and correcting, it, it was a little confusing to me the first time I read it until you explained it, um, that the total incidents for the different schools, especially the middle school, were not revised down, even though the violence had been, incidents had been revised to zero, so I think the total should be revised, um, because, uh, I'm assuming that the case, I'm sorry, I think that other incidents aren't, in order of that category of, um, uh, other incidents made for removal, are not included in the total incidents. Right, so you have total violence, and there's a substance of weapons, HIV, those are included in the total, and then there's the other, you know, pocket, the different rows, or columns, rather, and that's, that's not included in the total. So that, anyway, I apologize about this, but I just think it's great we have this data that is on the show, and who looks at paper easily understand it. Um, I also wanted to second something that, um, that, that this Pixley said, which was that, um, you have data given, data taken away, right, and it's great that it seems like we can revise some of the earlier, uh, violent, I, counts, violent incidents down to zero, or close to it, but that makes the spikes in, uh, the most recent quarter reporting, especially in middle school, a little more concerning, that now we supposedly have these systems in place, we know this is what's going on, and it seems to be much higher than it was at any time in the past year and half. Um, so I think I would echo, you know, this Pixley, and say we should make sure that the proper reporting is being done here, maybe the same mistake is being made unintentionally, we should make sure it's not being made. Um, and if it isn't, I mean, we really have to think about what's going on in the past quarter that's driving these huge spikes, including at Bardo, 57, you know, other incidents, um, I can't imagine what's going on, but we know something might be, so we should keep thinking about that. Um, and also, you know, I just wanna, um, say, you know, I, I take really seriously, uh, you know, Mr. Beatty's comment that we should take a dangerous look at, um, what the best way is to expand access to AP and advanced integrated courses. Um, and I sit on curriculum meeting call time in, in my job, and, you know, one of the biggest debates I have, we have, is what should the pre-records be? I mean, no one would think of offering, uh, a console of course without making sure students are ready to take it. Um, so I hope that we can have that conversation here at, uh, in Highland Park, and, and Mr. Beatty, I appreciate your comments, so we'll court that conversation.
Thank you, Ethan. Any other home business?
Home business, I think, um, I wanted to just follow up with what Ethan was talking about with the data. He did mention a couple more he needs to go, that possibly, Dr. Siska, he would reach out to the press to kind of correct course and make sure, even if it was just an opinion piece that went in, to say, this actually isn't, it wasn't reported accurately, and that it can officially change it, but that might go a long way. Um, and then I also just wanted to, um, support what Allison was saying, that we, we are on the board, I, I can at least speak for myself, in support of looking into making changes, um, we're gonna keep following up on it, I'm very interested in looking into alternates to, to busing, safe routes to school, in addition to the end time at schools, so, you know, we will keep, we will keep asking questions, this is happening behind the scenes, I think we need to be a little bit more public about the things we're asking behind the scenes, um, but just know that, uh, we do support looking into this.
And other home business? Okay, new business? Okay, we will start our second public comment period, the time is not limited during this, um, although it's 5 to 10, so, just keep that in mind. Um, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies number 0164 and number 0167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Salda?
Do we start, or repeat my name again?
Two.
Three, Salda, 331 plus Matthew. So, um, by the way, I just wanna say, I appreciate your angle's job, the reason I'm on it is school boards and kids, I don't think I can handle the heat, um, I appreciate what you do. Um, by, uh, so, on the issue of the, the start times in the process, I'm worried that we're gonna get the answer after, this goes back, it's too late to change it for the coming school year, because, um, the process has taken too long. And I want to contrast the, the data gathering that went in before making this very large decision, and the standard that you created, and the standard that you're potentially creating now. The, there was no discussion of changing the Bardo school time at all publicly until three days before the vote. You didn't have, the people who were impacted by it had no opportunity to tell you what it means to their lives, which is sort of why you do a public process, because it's hard to think through these big issues, and so you hear from the people, and they raise things that you might not have considered. Um, so that's what happened, and by the time you worked for people, they were already told, it's too late, you know, the swing's been made, votes in three days, sorry, we'll look at it for next year. Now I feel like we're on the verge of being told again, sorry, it's too late, and we need this data, and we need that data, and we need lots of study, but that study didn't go into making a decision in the first place. So I feel like the burden of proof should be on, like, let's at least get it back to where it was, um, and that's it. So I really hope, really, really hope that the answer is not, um, it's too late again, because reasons. Um, and then, and I agree, you should be more transparent, there are reasons, um, but we shouldn't be talking about them a year ago, and we should be acting like lightning right now to not have to do this again, and although we're hearing so much evidence, so we just heard that there's behavior problems from the Bardo students in after-school, is there a correlation between being tired and behavior over our parents? We know that there is, I mean, it's just, makes so much sense, so I, I urge you to please act, be bold, be a patient, let's, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, speaker in the room?
Hi, my name is Katie Sprecher, and I live in 1702 Gabriel Lane, um, that's past the temple. Once again, Bardo's start times, they should be later, because even if you're able to get up and get to school on time, everyone has sleep inertia, that's normal, you need half an hour to actually feel awake, and I get to do that now, because I'm in high school, the start times are later, I get to feel awake when I get to school and enjoy school because of that, and Bardo kids deserve that too. Also, people brought up a really good point about being able to get to school, like, walk Also, people brought up a really good point about being able to get to school like walkways, because I live past the tunnel by Johnson Park, and even my parents are concerned with me walking home alone, and I'm in high school. I'm in twelfth grade. So if Bartle kids, or even younger kids, have to go through that, well, that's tough on the parents and tough on the kids as well. Also, they aren't lit very well. If you have to go around the tunnel, there's not much light, and it's a good start. And also, um, you guys were talking about AP courses and prerequisites, and yeah, that's important. Also, teacher recommendations, they were always optional, and they were always helpful, because when I was a freshman, I had just transferred from another school. I didn't know that AP courses were a thing, because I didn't talk to my counselor much. And from teacher recommendations, I knew that was a thing, and I took AP tenth the next year, and it was amazing. And with the same course AP can, the next year, they made, um, our teacher remove a summer test to show that you knew enough can to take the course. And people did so much more importantly, because it's a hard course. So all of these things only help students know that they're ready for a course, and they can take the course that helps them, because if you're struggling in a course, you can't learn much. And if a teacher has to slow down for everyone else, well, it's not fair to the students who are struggling, because they're struggling, and it's not fair to the students who are being made to wait. So all of these recommendations and tests, they can be modified, but I don't think eliminating them entirely, especially when they're optional and only there to help students figure out where they should be, is going to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sternkarnau?
Oh, sorry, I got a missed turn. Actually, I can cut in front of my husband. Yeah. Um, hi, Alice Turnkarnau, Harper Street. I'll start by saying I'm sorry to you, Allison, um, that was rude. Um, but I was feeling heated, because I, and at this point, it's been multiple times speaking at this meeting, I've found reactions, and we'll go into that, but that was fine. The other thing I wanted to say, um, sorry, the other thing I wanted to say was about, um, start times. Again, I didn't talk too much about it earlier, but I did want to say, um, I appreciate what you said, Jen, but other people, that this will be explored. I appreciate what Randy said about, like, we have to do this now. Um, I, I've spoken with, with Dr. Sisca, um, I've spoken with, with many people about why this happened, what caused it, the issue with, um, two, two tags for the high school, high schoolers, and now they're, they're getting picked up, so they're not waiting around. I get it, I'm sure there's things I don't get, but I do get this. Um, probably more than most people in public, I'm sure there's things I don't know. Um, but I get why this happened, I get the process of what happened. But the one thing that was said from the very beginning is that we started with a three P M end time, and we worked backwards. And I understand, that's what the teachers, you know, all, all the teachers said they wanted. But my question is, what which teachers? Um, was there a formal poll? What about the parent professionals? What about the lunch staff? What about the office staff? I mean, there's, there's so many people, and, you know, we all look for data that confirms our biases, right? That's a, a natural phenomenon. So, um, of course, I'm, I'm looking for more people who might, you know, might, um, build it. But I do think that they're valid, I do think we have to consider everybody. Um, yes, the, the teachers are critical, they are, you know, I'm obsessed with my kids' teachers, they're wonderful. Um, but we really have to look at the whole community, and I do think that teachers would understand if this is presented to them as, like, our community has spoken, we have a problem here, we need a group effort, we all need to pitch it. Um, we're, and I don't know if that will solve it, because that hasn't ever been looked at, to my understanding. And we've talked about a lot of things that have been looked at, but I don't know. Um, if we set, if one school changes to three-ten, three-twenty, I'm not talking about four o'clock, but if one school goes a little later, does that magically kind of bust puzzle up, fit into place? It might, I don't know. Um, it is a complicated puzzle, I, you know, don't have the full, um, full busing routes. But, you know, that's what, that's what you're here for. We, we need you to help us fix this, and we need the board to express that this is a priority, uh, whether it affects you personally or not. And I know some people it does, some people it doesn't, but we need you to listen to us as a community and hear us saying that this is a real problem, that some of our kids are incredibly dysregulated with lack of sleep, and the data do show that there is an issue here. Um, you know, yes, there, you can find other data, anyway, we all, I already made that comment. But please, please look for the solution. I really think this three P M end time, while I understand why it started, there's clearly other factors that we need to be investigating that further. I think that isn't how we need a forward solution. And I, I just, I, would that solve the puzzle, and that needs to be explored. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else coming, Scotty? Okay, um, Mr. Sternkarnau?
Hi, Dan Sternkarnau, two-two-one Harper Street. Uh, first, I just want to say that I agree with, uh, everybody else who's spoken on the start time issue. Um, two kids are really hard to get there on time. Um, the other thing I want to talk about is how there's been an ongoing conversation with the after-school program since October, particularly about the new pre-K program. Uh, a number of parents, myself included, we were trying to get the pre-K to be more active, and specifically to limit screen time to just part of that after-school period, uh, rather than kind of a bunch of it, or most of it, or whatever the fraction might be. Um, we were given the scheduling for that program that they use, kind of their daily schedule, a few months ago. And we're just recently told that the schedule, that schedule is still in effect, and it specifies, like, during this time is when they'll have screen time. But at pickup, when we go and actually pick the kids up across a wide range of times, we see that the pre-K kids are just passively watching TV, like, literally without exception. That's what they're doing every time we go and pick them up. Um, even though we told this wasn't the case, that screen time was limited to specific parts of that program. Um, I pointed out this discrepancy between what the schedule says and what's actually happening in the pre-K after-school program via email just yesterday. Um, and then today, one day later, I didn't get a response, which is totally fine. I don't expect people to be able to respond immediately. Stuff's going on, people are busy, it's all good. But we did just this evening get a change to the after-school program pickup procedure that makes it so that parents can't actually see what's going on in the after-school program rooms anymore. Um, I like to give people the benefit of the doubt, but the timing seems not coincidental. And it makes me concerned, uh, in terms of the degree to which the after-school program might be willing to change their, their kind of programming, uh, in response to feedback from parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Scott?
Yeah, so I, I'm, I came home. I'm back here on Zoom for the second round of public comment. Uh, and I wanted to specifically address, I think, some issues of process. But in every single thing, this will happen, and these are longstanding issues of process. I've been to many, many board meetings, right? I've screened to be on the board, and these are long-time recurring issues. Some of it is, to use a sports analogy, it's like basic blocking and tackling. Like, send out a survey, but it makes sense, but isn't informative. Like, do that. Like, that's the kind of stuff that needs to happen, right? Um, if the, if the district sends out a survey that's a problem, that's not informative, that is frustrating to parents, um, that's a problem. I, that's, that's basic. Uh, the mics need to work in the room, that's basic, right? Um, I know it was said, oh, well, we couldn't have an earlier public comment time. I know that's not true, because I've been to many board meetings, and very busy board meetings, they've done exactly that. I've been in board meetings where, uh, the chair of the board has motioned to adding next to public comment times earlier on, especially on days when there are, you know, fifty-plus people on Zoom and a bunch of people, uh, uh, in the room, and you, uh, and high school students, you know, have staged a protest at the school where they handed out two-hundred-and-twenty-five stickers. Those are times to make sure the public gets to speak, and that we are not, you know, when we hobble in, um, on, on a night like this, um, waiting two hours to have a chance to say something. These are like really, really important things. Doing those kind of things make the public be heard. And then you can also benefit from all of the knowledge and expertise and everything that exists in Highland Park. And finally, I just wanted to address an issue of sort of, um, I think there needs to be a kind of fundamental respect for the public, right? I think there needs to be an understanding from the administration, from Dr. Sisca, and from the board, that the members of the public are the members of the public. We can be emotional, it's our kids, we can be upset, right? It's hard to get up and speak. I know for high school students who came and speak, it's hard to do this. And so there needs to be real respect. And I think there's a real problem, right? When it starts to become generally known that there is a person who has a very, very close connection with the superintendent.
Dr. Scott, I have to ask you to stop addressing this issue if you need to. You can email me, okay?
Well, no, I mean, this is free speech, I can say it, it's a well-known thing. It needs to be addressed, okay? And I, I hope you're not just trying to suppress me so it can all be swept up. And I hope it gets addressed. I really, really hope it gets addressed. That is respect for the public.
Thank you.
Okay?
Any other public comment? I move we adjourn. Second, all on paper.
Aye.